Good evening and welcome to the Budget Forum that the Select Board is here to listen to the Town Manager present. We have a lot of Heads of Departments here to answer questions. I wish I could tell you, you can phone in your questions, but you would have to be here in person. So I will -- and then this will be going over to a Select Board meeting at 8:00 where we'll talk more about the budget. So, stay tuned. Don't turn the channel.
I don't know if there's an opportunity for announcements, but there's a winter storm tomorrow. We already know that trash recycling collection has been delayed a week.
A day.
A day for the rest of the week.
Okay.
And so if your trash collection was supposed to be tomorrow, it would be Wednesday and so on.
Okay.
And that's -- so if you're a Friday route, you're on Saturday now. They're watching the news this evening. Many school districts in the region and many offices are closing already. We've just conferred with the Superintendent. He has not made an announcement yet, and neither have I with regard to town offices, but people should be mindful to check the website and the Facebook page in the morning for any kind of update in that regard. And obviously, it's going to be thick in the middle of the day, and so we advise people to don't travel unless you absolutely have to, so our DPW can keep the roads clear.
Right. So we hear it'll be thick. We've heard that before.
What's that?
We've heard this before, that it's just be thick.
And if it does go that way, LCTV does not come to the office when school is closed, so that might impact the scheduling of the -- we have meetings posted for tonight, tomorrow, Wednesday, and we'll have to have that conversation about what to do if school is canceled for the meeting tomorrow night.
It's your problem here.
Yeah.
Yeah. Great.
Debbie, can I have the --
Oh.
Thank you. You're supposed to be sitting over here.
I was up there.
Yeah.
I was gonna get the light first.
Sure. Sure.
We take the lights actually.
I'll put the can lights on.
Middle switch.
Put the -- no, sorry, the end switch. The middle switch. Oh, and the end one. Just can't -- the switch for can, there you go. Yay, there we are. I apologize for the delay, for the technical difficulties. So first of all, I'd like to, once again, thank Paul Pasterzak, Assistant Town Manager, for all of his work in compiling the budget, including helping with his presentation. I would also like to thank the Department Heads who are here this evening, mainly to answer questions that may come from the public or from the Board at this public forum, for their work in preparing the budget and the work they do in managing their departments efficiently every day. As we discussed when I presented the budget last week to the Select Board, I think the highlights for this year are that, once again, it is balanced. The FY19 Town Manager's Budget Proposal is balanced without the use of reserves. It did accomplish the goal we set out at the beginning to only increase property taxes 2.3 percent while maintaining level services, and that's opposed to increasing them 2.5 percent, which we're allowed to do under Prop 2.5. One of the new things this year, well, I should say, to get to the 2.3 percent, we have recommended, I would call them minor modifications, to both the capital and OPEB policies, and the recommendations were contemplated even before we really started nailing down budget numbers, just from a policy standpoint. It just so happens that if they're made, they reduce the expenditures enough to get us to that 2.3 percent. And the reality is, listening to feedback we've received, you know, the policies are the battlegrounds seemingly each year, and so we wanted to tighten them up a little bit so they would not be as big a target, I guess, for lack of a better term. It also includes the implementation of our Stormwater Enterprise Fund, which you'll see in a few slides, has affected the general fund budget for the DPW, so I don't want people to get alarmed a lot of that's picked up in the Enterprise Fund. And then another positive thing we had this year was a 10% increase in the Governor's Recommended State Aid Numbers. As you know, we carry the Governor's numbers as our budget assumption every year. The fact that they are much higher than past years is a positive thing. We did have some concern that maybe we were being a little optimistic, but we decided to continue with the set of assumptions that we always use. So this is just a summary, the famous pie charts, really, just for the Board's benefit and for the public's benefit, I really distilled this into only a few slides. Every year I get feedback that the presentations are too long, so I try and cut it down as much as possible. And then you can see the uses, and this is just the operating budgets, so this conforms with the sources and uses, that two-page budget summary that goes out in addition to the line items. So you can see, once again, schools are about 53% of the budget. Superintendent O'Shea was here presenting the budget at the last meeting, so you saw the details on that. Public Works is about 14%. Also 14% is the Employee Benefits and Liability Insurance. Public Safety's 8%. Debt Services 6%, and then Community Service, Planning, Community Development, and General Government are all above, just a little over 5% combined. So these are the categories. So within all those service lines, where do we spend our money? Obviously, and Superintendent O'Shea alluded to this last week as well, we are in the people business, so naturally, the costs associated with having people are the largest drivers of cost, salary being 56% of the budget, and then the benefits and insurance being 14%. So when you take those two things, which are the people costs, it's most of our budget. And then you see expense line items, which is a whole bunch of different things, as you can see from the line item spreadsheets, constitutes about 22% of the budget. These are the fund balances. I have these here just to show that we are going into the budgeting season. I think with favorable positions in free cash, this is certified previous fiscal year free cash.
Still available.
Still available. And then the Operational Stabilization Fund, I think, has grown in a meaningful way over the last few years, so that's now almost 3.3 million. The Capital Stabilization Fund is down. We had to spend some of that for some projects that, both unexpected and ran over, so that's 25,000. Water retained earnings, about half a million. Sewer retained earnings, about 900,000. Solid Waste Recycling retained earnings is about 42,000, and then Ambulance Reserve is about 41,000. So this is just a summary of where each department went individually. As noted, the overall budget, we only needed to increase taxes 2.3%, but you can see that there are some increases beyond that. The total for the town, for the general fund budget is 2.4%. You can see here, Planning, Community Development is down 4.8%, but that's such a small budget, I don't even know which --
Couple thousand dollars.
Yeah. A couple thousand dollars does that, so I don't want that to jump off the page. It may have been, you know, maybe, I don't know, if it's Esther's attrition or --
No, it was to cover the sick leave.
Oh, sick leave, right. The Planning, Community Development line item had increased to cover sick leave for a longtime employee who has actually since retired. I don't know if I let you guys know that. So that's really level service. Public Works, as you can see, is also down 11%. That difference is made up with the Stormwater Utility Revenue. It's about $200,000 that we're projecting in utility revenue. We will be sending you this week the draft Stormwater Discount or Abatement Policies that we've been working on, so that'll -- that may impact that revenue a little bit. Our analysis shows not really significantly, even if everyone took the abatement, which we don't think people will. And then you can see Debt Services is up 6.5%, and Employee Benefits Liability Insurance is up 7.2%. So when you factor in all these increases, the 2.4% is, I think, pretty good work. Like I said, Stormwater Utility is doing its job for the general fund this year in year one, and the Governor's numbers have improved our complexion significantly. So that was really, and I say brief slideshow, that was it. You have the line items in front of you. We distributed those last week. I guess I would turn it over to Paul for any additional comments, or turn it over to the Board for questions or comments from the public, anybody's here? Besides Richard? You don't --
The only thing I would add, on the Department of Public Works, had we not made the move for the Stormwater Fee, they actually would have had an increase in their budget of about 5%. So again, that made a significant difference, putting some of that, some of those expenditures in the Stormwater Enterprise Fund.
The question was asked last week, so for the sake of the public forum part of this, on the town side, there are no new FTE positions, no benefited positions that we're adding. It is truly a level service budget. Even the work related to the Stormwater Utility is a small amount of additional work, which is why the fee is relatively small, but we have not, we do not need to add employees to accomplish that. So it really is just status quo, I would call it, a relatively speaking, no drama budget. We, this 2.3% increase, the information we're presenting here does fully fund the school department's request, and we think it went -- it doesn't go smoothly every year, but we think that this was a year that things came together pretty nicely.
Does the, the debt service doesn't include the DPW, new DPW yet?
It includes $350,000 right now, and that was put in only, you know, prior to our discussion last week in order to keep the tax rate moving gradually upwards, as opposed to taking a dip and then skyrocketing into following year.
And does it include bonding for the DIF?
It does not, but it does not include the DIF on either the revenue side or the expenditure side.
And it looks like the legal services, you know, what's recommended for that is the same as last year, even though we have needed additional funds this year? I mean, we, so we're feeling that we don't need to make any changes in that part of the budget.
It's up from the original budget, but it's down from our expenditures to date. There are a couple court cases or cases that are being litigated right now that we would hope we would not be carrying forward at FY19. But if we looked at the beginning of the year, I think we started the beginning of the year with the $50,000 budget in FY18, we're recommending 75,000 for FY19.
Okay, yeah.
We had to add money several, I think, a couple of different times last, in the current fiscal year, for a variety of reasons. Converse Street was one of them. No, that was FY17.
Pride is the biggest one.
Yeah, the biggest thing is the Pride Station litigation, or the Pride, yeah, litigation related to the Pride Planning Board application.
Okay. All right, so it's $25,000 more than the year before.
Right, yes.
All right, thank you.
Tom, Mark?
Just have a couple of questions. Paul, you noted that without the inclusion of the Stormwater Utility, that the DPW would have been up 5%. What would the entire budget have been?
Mark, I don't have that number.
Okay, because I was trying to put that together, but do we get a breakout of the Stormwater Utility in this?
Yes, at the very last page, you should have the identification of the Stormwater Utility Fund.
Because I see, maybe I didn't print it out.
Page 15?
Page what?
15.
That's why mine ends at 13.
Oh, you missed, okay. But there is a breakout by the line item. Basically, we took 50% of the highway labor counts, and then Mario had given us a number of other --
Thanks, Debbie.
Mario had given us a number of other, the expense line items, which had different percentages that were transferred over, whether they were 20% of this line item or 100% of this line item. Those amounts were all transferred over.
That's not, there's not a lot of additional expense with the Stormwater Utility? A lot of stuff we're already doing, is that what you're asking, Mark?
No, no. What I'm trying to understand is, how much of a bullet did we dodge on our 2.3 versus 2.5% tax increase by moving what looks like $2 million into the Stormwater Utility?
No, we're actually, the Stormwater Utility budget will be $652,000.
Okay, I'm sorry, right.
So again, looking at the 2.4%, which was your first question, it would probably go up maybe just over 3% bottom line, general fund, had we not made that move into the Stormwater Fee Fund.
Thanks. And the other question I have is, I may be looking outdated data here, but one of the pieces of paper he gave us is the budget overview, right, which is the summary of the budget overview, and bottom of page two, which is, or page three, is summary expenditure by category. Are those the numbers, Stephen, that you drew for your?
So there's one minor change
In the pie chart, right.
In the pie chart. This one right here?
Right, that, I was trying to compare that pie chart to this summary by --
If you look at, if you look at --
Sorry.
Yeah, if you look at page one
Yeah.
And you go to line 22A.
Salary adjustments not allocated.
Right, that's for collective bargaining. We fold, I folded that into these numbers, which is why they're a little --
Okay, but they're not out, because they're not allocated, they're not --
Right, but you see the number right below it, is that 69, 104, 496, which was what he has on the screen.
69.
So when you look at this, if you go right below that number on page one, that's the 69, 104, 496. To make sure that the numbers stayed true throughout the presentation, I ended up adding that into the salary category on the, when you go down to line 89 on page three.
Right, that's what I was trying to compare.
So it's 33,000 whatever dollars off.
Right. That number's added into the salary line.
Okay, what's the date of your, I'm using an old one. I've got March 1st?
Should, I'm looking at 2/25.
Okay.
No, no, I'm sorry, I got 3/2 down here.
I got 3/2 in there.
Okay, I'll find yours, okay.
What you have, what, I'm looking at the one that you got Monday night, on the 5th.
Yeah, okay, I'm gonna look at that on my computer. Thank you.
Was there any other, two weeks of the numbers?
No, no, that's exactly where they came from.
Okay.
Yeah, those are, that was the only difference I could see between those. Can you send us a copy of this?
Sure.
Thanks.
So I also wanted to give the Board the opportunity to ask questions of the Department Heads. I think if you wanted to wait for a different night, I would just ask, let me know which ones you want to come back, or since they're all here, now's a good time to do it, isn't it?
Do it now. Yeah, that might be a good time to do it now.
So are there any more questions about the presentation? Because we can go back to our respective corners and come out fighting at the bell.
Okay, yeah.
I wanna do that one.
Department Heads can just give us a brief idea of how the budget's fitting their department, I guess, and what they feel about the new numbers. That'd be helpful.
Should we go in order of size of the category?
No, go in order, wants to get out of here first.
Yes.
Don't all, don't all jump at once.
Then can you start with the Town Manager's budget? Town, Town Manager's Select Board?
All right, so I guess we'll start, yeah.
Yeah, we'll see how this goes.
Let the front row start first. So Mario, so these budget numbers, I mean, is there anything about this budget that is gonna really make it difficult for you, or does it seem like it's a good fit? I mean --
It's a fair budget. As these guys already presented, it's a little different in that this year we're rolling out the Enterprise Fund for the storm drains, so there'll be some tweaks to that going forward, in that there's the abatement process that I think Stephen said he will present next week for folks who want to pursue that, so I think that'll be a little interesting in the first year or two. Other than that, it is, as Stephen said and Paul said, a level funded budget, and so I believe we can live with what we have, and we'll be able to fulfill all the services that we provided in the past.
Okay, and will there be any Stormwater projects that you're taking on this next year?
The big one is the Morningside Drive Culver Project, so that, with any luck, will get funded at town meeting, and then we'll plan on starting it summer, fall, next, this year.
Okay, and the vehicles, you've had a couple requests for vehicles, it'll come through Capital?
Yeah, Capital is here, last week, or two weeks ago, I forget, and it worked out great for us this year, I think, maybe all but a mower, if I'm not mistaken, or no, I'm sorry, a sidewalk plow was approved through that process, so assuming that is all approved at town meeting, we should be in good shape.
Okay, so any sidewalks that belong to the town, we have to plow
We do.
24 hours and so, okay, so we have that. But we managed to get to those with a different vehicle now?
We have, right, we have a tractor-like piece of equipment that is on its last legs, and the repair parts are hard to come by, and it's expensive to run because of that, and our request this year was to replace it. We're gonna have to Band-Aid it for another year, and we'll make it work, and with any luck, we'll have a winter like we did two years ago, I don't know if you remember that, it was really the non-winter. I hope for that every year. Not so much this year, it didn't work out, but fingers crossed.
Okay. I don't know if guys have any other, any questions?
Mario, my biggest question really is, you've got so many parts here, you know, how do, how do you separate them so that we know what items really cost? And I'm not suggesting anything funny's going on, other than, you know, money's fungible, you've got a fixed group of people, and, you know, they go out and you're running four, now five different depart, water sewer, stormwater, you know, building maintenance, grounds, and highways, so it's six different operations. I mean, how do you track that so that we know what our costs really are in each department?
So generally speaking, the managers of each one of those kind of divisions, who request the materials, are kind of responsible for where they're pulling that money from. So if we're buying catch basin covers, that's going to be storm drains. If we're buying water meters, water. I mean, I'm generalizing, but that's kinda, that's kinda how it works for us, is what do we need, who's ordering it, they know what they need it for, and then when the bill comes in, we apply it to the budget that it belongs to.
Yeah, but with 70% of our expenses being people expenses, I'm not worried about what you buy. I mean, that's pretty straightforward. I think it's the, how do you allocate people to the different departments? Because that makes a huge difference, especially when we have three of these six, that's what I'll call non-tax, you know, or non-Prop 2.5 kind of regulated. We could put more expenses in there and kind of skew what's really going on.
The simple answer is that it's kind of preset at the beginning of the year, based on kind of how they're funded. When it comes to special projects or overtime, those get charged exactly to what they're doing, but every other day of the week, generally speaking, their time is charged to the budget that was allocated to them.
Okay, so before you got here, Mario, I think, didn't we do a study at some point?
Right, we actually did a time study. Mario's staff was asked to present a time card. I think we did it one day a week for about a year. So we had, we took out some of the seasonality of it, and we developed what the percentages were, and over a three-year period, because there was such a big change, basically from general fund and sewer, we actually graduated to where we are today in those percentages. Now, at some point in time, we should probably do it again, now that we're having another fund in there, just to see how accurate we are and what needs to be changed. But that's how the percentages that he inherited were developed, through a kind of a time, internal time study.
Yeah, I remember when you did it, I guess that was one of my things, is that now with the Stormwater Utility, maybe we, it's a real pain to do it, I believe, but --
I've heard that.
But I think at some point, I think we owe it to people to, so we can pull things apart. All right, and I guess that was my only, my only big thing, although there was a significant increase proposed in the budget for the high school here, and do you know if there, the maintenance, the maintenance expenses?
Right, I saw that line, and for the last two years, it's trended well over, and if I remember correctly, it was like in $100,000 area, and so we're constantly moving funds around to try to keep that out of the red, and my request this year to the Town Manager was to fund it at the level that it has been at, and so it's not one any, it's not one particular thing that's driving it up, it's just a lot of little things, year after year.
Thanks.
Speaking of the higher facilities, Dr.
Oh, we did? That's good.
I'm curious, so with the Stormwater Fund, all, these are all things that you would do in anyways, right?
Right.
So now, they're just now thrown into that category? You have any new, I mean, you will eventually have things that you have to do that you hadn't done before.
Right, so there's a new permit coming out, MS4, that was scheduled to come out this past July 1st. Change in presidents, things change in politics, that was put on a shelf. There's some talk that it'll be released this July 1st. Some of the requirements that go with the new permit, increased catch basin cleaning, mapping, different outreach programs, all are going to be more costly than the things we've done in the past, so.
When is that, that's July?
There's not a hard date yet, but there's been talk that it could come out again this July 1st.
It's a federal EPA rule, and I've heard discussions that if the federal government does not take action, that the state is contemplating promulgating its own Stormwater rules in the near future.
Okay, now, in 2019, when we'll be making the transition into the new facility, right?
I think, when I do the math, I think we're somewhere in the late summer or early fall of 2019.
Okay.
2020?
FY20.
Sorry, FY20.
FY20, okay, all right, because I guess, I would think you might have to do some planning for that transition.
Sure, yeah, I would suspect that, at least some of our utility bills will be different than they are today.
Yeah, but a lot of times it offers
Yeah, exactly.
The opportunity, like certain departments who maybe weren't housed as close to each other are gonna be like, like next door, and sometimes there's some transition needs in terms of integrating departments, especially like sort of the people that go out in the field and people who are in-house, and I don't know if you see that there's gonna be much of a change in the way, you know, your department interacts on a daily basis.
I think there will be. Generally speaking, all but the facilities management folks are at Pondside, although we're in two different buildings, so there is a little disconnect.
Yeah.
They're close enough where, you know, we go out there, they come in, just their normal course of business, work orders and directives, things like that. The big change will be for the facility maintenance folks, who's in some ways had their own, you know, their own kingdom, and so that, they're gonna have to transition to, you know, almost their own, their own
I think when I do the math, I think we're somewhere in the late summer or early fall of 2019.
Oh, okay.
2020?
FY '20.
Sorry, FY '20.
FY '20, okay, all right. Because I guess I would think you might have to do some planning for that transition.
Yeah, I would suspect that at least some of our utility bills will be different than they are today.
But a lot of times it offers...
Yeah, exactly.
The opportunity, like certain departments who maybe weren't housed as close to each other are going to be like, like next door. And sometimes there's some transition needs in terms of integrating departments, especially like the people that go out in the field and people who are in-house. And I don't know if you see that there's going to be much of a change in the way, you know, your department interacts on a daily basis.
Generally speaking, all but the facilities management folks are at Pondside. Although we're in two different buildings, so there is a little disconnect. They're close enough where, you know, we go out there, they come in just through normal course of business, work orders and directives, things like that. The big change will be for the facility maintenance folks who's in some ways had their own, you know, their own kingdom. And so that, they're going to have to transition to, you know, almost their own, their own private place and to default and be, you know, with the rest of us. And so what exactly that looks like, I can't say at the moment. I see it as a positive from a management perspective. Time will tell if I'm right about that.
Because you're, I would suggest you'll probably need to do some advanced planning. Just because, you know, like they're used to being on their own. And, you know, that happens probably in a lot of different departments and in different organizations. But merging them, all of a sudden, you know, there'll be some transition concerns. And so a lot of times companies will have a series of sort of integration meetings. So people are aware of, you know, what the differences are in their approach and so that they don't, you know, end up, you know, like complaining about, well, this person does, you know, that department now does this and then we always did it this way and, you know. Just because it's, it's probably a subtle difference when you think about it because you're all pretty close and work closely together. But give it some thought.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I agree with you. There could be potential for conflict.
Yeah. Mark?
So Mario, two items that have come up in the past that I'd like to just get an update on. And one is forestry. We, you know, after 2011, we spent a bundle of money on trees and bumped up the budget. And I guess the question is, is it still appropriate at the level it's at? Or because, or is it, no, at what point can we bring it back down? I'll chance that one. The other one is going to be janitorial services.
We probably could take that down to a certain degree. Last year, if I remember correctly, maybe it was two years ago now, we broke up the forestry line item into two items. One being planting and one non-planting, if for lack of a better term. The planting program, I wouldn't want to touch. I think that is something that we, you know, we're trying to achieve every year and regenerating the trees that we lose through storms and just age and things like that. I think the pruning and removal has, is on more on a downward trend and that line probably could be reduced a little bit. But I couldn't give you a number right now as to what that would be.
And most of that is contracted, correct?
Correct.
As opposed to, we don't, I mean, we don't do...
We do some trimming, minor, but majority of the work is done by contractor.
Done some stump removal yourselves too, but, but most of it, I mean, it's Northern Tree Service or whoever you're using.
Right.
The other question that's come up before is janitorial services, outsourcing it, insourcing it, changing it. What, where are we now?
So I presume you're talking about public buildings, right, not schools?
Right.
That contract is coming up in the next few months. As best I know, I think it's our plan to bid it again, see what we get for a price. If it's within, we didn't increase it in this budget. So if it's within the allotted amount, I don't know that we're looking to make a change. If it's over, I would think that would force our hand into looking at what our options are. But that's where it's at at the moment.
But we're in a, in terms of maintenance of the buildings, we're in a good spot?
The custodial, I mean, I, I don't know the history of it to know if it's a whole lot better or worse than the past. But the complaints are relative year by year, so...
Maybe I think it's, this is the, I think, this is the best one we've had since I've been here.
That's what I've heard.
They've all been terrible. This is the least worst of the ones we've had. You know, I think it just depends on, you know, the person that they have cleaning the fire station, I think, does a great job. Town hall is pretty good. It just depends on the building and the person. It's a high turnover industry because of low wages and not great working conditions. As you recall, we did add a full-time custodian to Greenwood because of the sources of, because of the numerous complaints. And I'm hearing that Bernie does a better job than we had with the contracted cleaning, so... You know, so we do evaluate that every year. I mean, I think the benefited, not only would it, if we decided to insource that again, they would be benefited and probably unionized. So I still think on par the outsourcing of that makes sense.
Great, thanks.
Okay. And as far as like tree service, I mean, when we look at the amount of money we spend for having folks come in and do these cleanup projects and so forth, is that something that is a stable cost? Has it gone up? I mean, is this something that we should ever consider, you know, doing some more, some more of ourselves? Like, because you work for the city of Springfield, I don't know how much tree work they did there.
They, well, have, just by geographic size, have a whole lot more tree work to do than us.
Yeah.
So much so that they can't do it all themselves either, they hire contract work. I don't see the town moving in a direction to insource it again. We do have some personnel with that skill. And I think in an emergency, those folks are called upon to do that work. Generally speaking though, the man, we don't have enough manpower. And I don't know that it would, like Stephen said, cost benefit wise, when you start looking into OPEB costs, I don't know that that would be something we'd want to do for the long run.
Yeah, okay, great. Yeah, you're set?
I'm set.
Okay, I guess I'm set. Did you have any other comments you wanted to make?
I do not.
Okay, well, thanks for being here. So I don't know if we do this by department size, I don't know, is this a free-for-all?
Well, since they're still taking me to the public forum, I did see, I know John is here for CPA for later, but I did see Mary Roganis, who's the on the board trustees, is the chair of the board trustees libraries. If you want to open for public comment or question, if she had something to offer.
All right. So you want to open for public comment now?
I think we're in the public forum, part of it.
Public forum, all right. So, yeah, please.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman.
Yep.
She's here too.
Librarians here, yeah?
Jean May Zier is the library director.
Hello. Hi, Mary. Yeah, well, I'm here representing the library. And Mary Roganis, head of the library board. And just, we'll speak to the budget, which is pretty much the same as it was last year. I don't know if the selectmen are aware, or select board members, that the state sets a requirement for what should be spent by municipalities for libraries. During the serious statewide crisis about eight or 10 years ago, half of the libraries in the state were not meeting the state mandate. And waivers were granted by the state so that they could continue their certification and keep the state support of about, in our case, $20,000 a year. Since that time, all libraries but 22 have come up to the mandate. Long Meadow is one of those 22 that has not. So we are still getting a waiver every year. It's something that is a little bit of a nagging thing. It's a little bit embarrassing that Long Meadow does not meet the standard that is met by almost every other library in the state. So we're not asking for anything to change this year. We're just wanting to make you aware that we have an ongoing shortfall and we'll hope that there is some way that we can start addressing that in the years to come. Long Meadow is fortunate because the library does have the opportunity to raise money, unlike, for instance, a school department. But there are some things that have to be paid for by the town. Salaries is one. Hours have been cut. We cannot make up salaries by asking for money from the public. And so we'll be asking for it from the town. This year, we're happy.
Okay, yeah, Mark?
Mary, what's the metric and where does Long Meadow fall short of that metric for state funding? Is it per capita? Is it dollars per hour? Is it, what's, what's the metric?
It's money for services and it's, there are problems with it, with the formula. The formula very simply is whatever it was last year, it's 2.5% more.
Oh, I see.
And we fell, we were quite a bit short at the time of the statewide shortfalls. And so that has been kind of building on itself over the years. So any years, and I see this year, there will be some put in for salary adjustments over time. But right now, it's about $700 more than it was last year, which is a little bit shy of 2.5% increase. And that's, so that's, once you meet the standard, it's 2.5% more every year. And it's, it cannot be, we were hoping that we could apply the work that was done outside with the improvements to the stairway and the ramp a couple winters ago. But the state has informed us that that's a capital type thing and that does not help us with the mandate that has to be spent by the town for the library.
But it's just overall spending? That's, okay, so...
It's for services, for services.
Okay. I guess that my, my other comment for the library is strictly that, that I'm of the opinion that our pre-19 or what, pre-town change agreement between the library trustees and the town is, needs to be modified. I don't, I don't know the last, well, I don't, I don't know if anybody on the select board's even seen it, but I've, I've got a copy of it. I'm sure you've seen it.
Oh, I've got it.
And it speaks very specifically of a different town organization than the town organization we have now, where the town manager, you know, helps direct the budget. And it wasn't there prior to that. And I don't know how we can do that, but I would hope that over the next year, we can try to, if you will, renegotiate. And I don't think it's much of a renegotiation. That, that, I think it's a memorandum of understanding, an MOU, between the library trustees and the, and the town of Long Meadow as part of how the budget's prepared, who's responsible for it and all that kind of stuff. It's just, just terribly outdated and yet it's still the...
It's outdated, but it's the one, it's the ruling agreement.
It's the ruling, running agreement, right.
Seriously.
Right, and we're in serious breach of the agreement, exactly.
I'm with you and I'll shake hands on that.
Well, no, I, yeah, we're in breach, so we either change the agreement or...
We have to change the agreement or else change the way we do business.
Right, so Stephen, I think, I don't know if you've...
I mean, I don't agree that we're in breach of the, I mean, the charter is the constitution of the town. The charter delegates authorities for across all, including budgeting and appointment. I do think that there are, there's a broader relationship between the board trustees and the town insofar as the town owns the building and some of the grounds, but the trustees owns the rest of the grounds. We maintain baseball diamonds that are used by town clubs that are on trustee land. And the trustees do generously support the library financially as well as from a community support, in gender and community support. So there is a broader relationship that I do think needs to be recodified. But I wouldn't suggest, at least it's not my view, that we're in breach.
But we're not, we're not following that agreement anymore.
We're following the charter for the areas that I think are, are most, are the sources of most of the disagreement. But just a comment about the budget. If you don't get your waiver, then you can't have access to the CW Mar statewide lending and online system. That's right, Jean.
Correct, we're, we're not certified.
Right.
Right.
So that's kind of the, that's kind of the stick, if you will, that the state uses to have libraries maintain their level of effort or continue to apply for waivers. This year, because of, largely because of turnover, we've had some attrition. And that's what has affected the salaries. We haven't reduced positions at all. It's just the people who are here a long time were replaced by people who came in at lower salaries, which is typical. So I would venture to guess that in FY, the FY '20 budget, it'll be more along the lines of 2.5% or something like that, more than you see in FY '19. Because there'll be step increases, there'll be potentially cost of living increases, things like that. So I think it's, this is kind of a one-year anomaly because of, like I said, because of attrition. But not attrition of leaving positions unfilled, it's just salary scale attrition.
So, but in terms of the overall money spent on the library, like when we do any renovations or...
We own the building. We, the town owns the building. That was...
So it's really separate from, we don't like...
Separate from the operation, the operations of the library are what I was concerned, concerned about. Because that, that, at the town, at the time the building was turned over to ownership of the town, there was a memorandum of understanding between the trustees of Stor's Library, which prior to that had been an independent 501(c)(3) who owned the building, owned the land and owned the library and ran the library. With now that the town owns the building, town runs the department as a town department, but there's still an operating agreement with the trustees of the library. And that's what, it's, as Stephen said, it's just been overwhelmed by the, you know, I'm not arguing with Stephen at all. It's been overwhelmed by our change in charter and the MOU is based on a pre-charter system.
It's a signed legal document, an operating agreement between the town and the trustees.
Right. But I would argue that the library operating agreement is similar to, say, bylaws that the council and aging have that predate the charter as well. And it's, there are a lot of these things like this that are out there that are from a contextual standpoint and from a governance standpoint, there are parts of them that just are radically changed, but the documents themselves haven't caught up. This is something that the charter review committee actually is talking about. As we spoke, we talked about in our last meeting, the library operating agreement, library operating agreement was when they came up specifically. And so I know the charter review committee is doing some work on these types of agreements and will be presenting that, their findings at some point in time to the select board.
Great.
All right, great. Marie?
I have a question. I know we discussed this before, the shortfall, if we go up 2.5% this upcoming year, does that mean we no longer need a waiver? Or is there going to be, actually, we have to make up for lost years?
You want to answer that one, Jean?
We will still need a waiver this year.
No, but I'm saying, next year, the town manager says we might be able to go up to the 2.5%. But even then, do we have to make up the shortfall of all those other years?
Oh, all the previous years? No, we will not have to go back to that level, well...
Yes, it's a shortfall that's been building. And going up 2.5% would take care of one year's requirement. That would be, that would be an important start. But there is a backlog.
And which is in to the extent of how much again?
It's, I think it's over $50,000. Just because every year that we don't meet the standard, it gets a little bigger.
And then a comment, I know that Stephen, the MOU's been a project that's been sitting out for the select board and for you to, to move on. And I think that we should start looking at it and look at some points, even though the charter committee is also making considerations. I think it's worthwhile for us to move ahead on it too and see where we're going to be making changes. Because the big concern is the way we're operating is not what's in the agreement. And so I know you felt it's had to be corrected. So why don't we put that on the agenda to really do something about in the next six months or so?
Okay. I don't know if you want to take it off the charter committees plates.
I think they can, they can, they're not going to rewrite the MOU. They can make recommendations, but it's...
That's the thing, they can't rewrite, the only people who can rewrite the MOU is the library board and the town. The charter commission is just going to say the MOU is outdated and needs to be rewritten. Whether they say it or not, we know it is, so let's just do it.
Thank you.
And the shortfall isn't really the business of this year's budget. But I wanted to bring it up because it is something like the operating agreement that is out there all the time.
All right, well, that's an interesting thing. Thanks for drawing that to our attention. Because we haven't heard that in a while. I don't remember.
No, every year we hear that we need the waiver. I just didn't realize $50,000 was this huge backlog that we would have to address. I was hoping we could just hit the 2.5 and we'd be fine.
We can also talk with state about changing it because there are changes that should be made to it, but they haven't been made. And all but 22 have done what they had to to live with the rules as they are.
And we are working with some staff members in the Mass Board of Library Commissioners. And we're hoping to maybe reevaluate our formula and we can look for adjustments that way also.
I mean, I think the, I've had this discussion with the, at the MMA conference, the board of libraries as well. It's almost like a, it is analogous to the levy cap in that the certain communities end up in, for a variety of unique circumstances, end up in a position similar to what we're in where you're nearing the top of... in, where you're nearing the top of levy cap. Doesn't take into consideration cost pressures, fluctuations of valuation, you know, global factors at all. We don't, we clearly are invested in our library, we have a great library, and we offer expanding programs, some of that is with the support of the board trustees and the community, but we clearly, the library is clearly important to the executive and legislative branches of the community, but it is also very well managed, so there isn't a need for significant increases year in, year out. And I think the formula kind of blindly disregards that level of effort and investment in the context of our budget and our community. And I think that that's one, and I, I hope we can have a dialogue with them where there needs to be some flexibility in the formula where it reflects the conditions in each community.
Okay. So, any other questions for? Okay, well, thanks for-
Thank you.
And then, we don't really have a group, but we have, well, historical district here here? Or left?
It's public safety, maybe now paging, public safety.
It's going to be a heavy duty-
Please report to the center table.
With the storm.
Yes. Storm team.
All right, so, well, thank you for being here, we, you know, it looks like Santa Claus has been good to you guys, no? We have new fire truck onboard, right?
We do, we went into service about three weeks ago, so it's in full service now. And I opened up to the public, if anybody would like to come and see it, they're more than welcome. It's truly a remarkable piece of equipment, and we greatly appreciate community support and allowing us to purchase it. It's certainly going to be a great piece of equipment for many, many years to come.
Okay, and an ambulance, we have a-
Yep, we anticipate arrival of a replacement ambulance for our medic one in end of May, early June, it's currently being built, so.
Okay, well, that's good. And your sense of the budget, I mean, do you feel like it's going to be in a good position to maintain your vehicles?
Well, we did have, we did have a discussion about that. So the FY nineteen budget actually represents the completion of our reorganization, which we started two fiscal years ago. So this will have all the positions in place. If you notice, my firefighter salary budget is less this year than it was last year, that's because of attrition. I am, have the good and sometimes not so good job of actually replacing a lot of my senior members on the fire department. We've done three this year plus two, the two additional employees, and I know for sure right now, I'll do at least four next year, when you're taking, talking to 24-person department, those are big numbers. So we're doing a lot of replacement, and a lot of my budget, excuse me, reflects the costs associated with the replacement. Obviously, the employee costs drop a little bit, but I have to clothe and equip those employees, so there are some line items there that are increased from previous years because of that. And we did move some money around to, to support that, so. We did reduce vehicle maintenance by $10,000. And that was the agreement we reached on it, because of the newer, the newer age of the apparatus, although I do have about, just shy of a $3 million fleet, so that's fairly low, $25,000, it's a fairly low number just to maintain that fleet. And you have breakdowns for this equipment are very expensive, so we have a great maintenance program, but a lot of that is preventative maintenance, so you have to spend money to keep the big breakdowns away. This budget will support that preventive maintenance, however, if I do have major breakdowns, it will not support it, so, which is a budget assumption.
So there's been, you know, talk all along about having a regular schedule for replacement of these and having a slush fund, for lack of a better word, to, do you maintain something?
Yeah, absolutely, so I have a 25-year capital plan, everything $25,000 and above. All the equipment in the fire department, and all of our vehicles are listed on that. I've had that program since I took over. I work closely with the capital planning committee. I use, also use as a planning document for when I apply for grants, and when I gave my capital plan to the town manager this year, actually eliminated just about all of my capital requests for the next five years, because we funded them through grants. There was one vehicle request in there, which I think we'll, we'll talk about in a minute. Capital planning does set aside money in the capital plan towards fire apparatus replacement, obviously, these are very expensive vehicles, and they did support that again this year.
Any further discussions with the state about 91?
There's a lot of discussions going on about 91, but none are putting revenue back in our pocket. I am going to be coming back to you folks, probably when we do the EMS rates in another month here, working on a project for doing more cost recovery for incidents down there. We've had two larger incidents this year, where we've been able to pursue cost recovery from the insurance companies, and we're successful in both of those. And right now, we're using what they call county rates, which are fairly low. We've gone ahead and done a cost survey, it includes both police department services and DPW also, for time to time, well, police obviously, but we may use a DPW dump truck or BACO, or they may do traffic control. So we're going to attempt to do more, when the opportunities present themselves, do more, more cost recovery.
So, just for example, so if we have to go down to 91 and use the jaws of life, we could recover costs?
Likely in that scenario, no sir. Under MGL 21E and 21K, which are basically environmental regulations, and we do several times a year go down for oil spills and other kind of hazardous material incidents, those cases there, the responsible party, you, we as the responder can see cost recovery under those laws. So, it has not been a common practice, I've instituted it more since we've taken over, and I think we've been fairly successful at it, so.
Okay, all right, but not for equipment use?
Yes, oh yeah, absolutely, yeah. A fire truck, police cruiser, ambulance, BACO, and then our labor rates are at the contractual rates that are in the collective bargaining agreements.
Okay. Yes, Mark?
I have a couple of questions for Chief Stankwitz. The biggest one is fuel costs. What was the basis by moving fuel costs up substantially? Is there some kind of notice we get that says our fuels are going up, or is it actual usage?
Well, I did a five-year assessment, over the last five fiscal years, when I averaged them out, we were spending an average of $1.83 a gallon. Again, this year, we went through a new fueling system, now that the DPW facility is closed, and we can't pump our gas from their facility anymore. We're utilizing the WEX card, which is the prevailing rate in Massachusetts minus the taxes, so we fuel now at any local gasoline station. So they're seeing an increase. So I figured it out to be, we're seeing that there's an increase, it's, we're paying now an average of $2.20 as opposed to $1.83 cents. So that's why we're seeing a significant increase, which is about a 28% increase this year. I anticipate it to be the same next year, and especially when you look at, the cost of crude oil is increasing, and with changing of the summer crude, the additives, we're going to see an increase as well there.
I get, and I don't know if the question's for you or Stephen, for you or maybe for Mario, it's split here, but at some point, are we better off fixing the fuel system or putting in some fuel system that's now transferable to our new DPW facility relative to spending that kind of additional money?
We looked at that before we went to the WEX cards, and the answer was no, because it was, I think it was $10,000 to get it certified, the fueling system certified, and to get certified, I think it needed like $30,000 worth of work, and, and then the, the new fueling system, which is going to be above ground storage tanks, needs to be built at the new facility. And so we just looked at it and we thought, for the two years that we'll have to do it, we, you know, we'll have to absorb the cost increases. And then in FY twenty, as we just noted, we figure midsummer in 2019, the new facility will be open. We are talking to Weston Sampson about potentially having the salt shed in the Fuel Island be in the first two things to be completed, so we could even be fueling our own vehicles earlier than that. But that was the analysis we ran to, before we went to the WEX cards.
All right. I guess the, the only other thing was, is communications, Chief Stankwitz, about, relative to, you know, is that your standard replacement of what I'll call police handhelds and all that stuff that has always been in there for year after, year after year? It has nothing to do with a communication center or any of that stuff?
No, it has nothing to do with that, nor is it even in buying new equipment, what that is, is contractual.
So there are maintenance contracts?
So we have maintenance contracts, our license plate reader, our computer aided dispatch system, which is over $12,000 a year, as well as some other, some other issues we deal with annually as far as having our contractual issues of maintenance agreements.
And you're down to, back down to two vehicles?
Yeah, we'll be back down to two vehicles. Fortunately for us, last year, we, you allowed us to purchase a third vehicle, which, which helped us to maintain our fleet, so we're only, we place those at 120,000 miles a year. So that's our, that's our baseline, where we like to trade our first-line vehicles or pursuit vehicles to be traded in. So now we're down to a schedule of three vehicles, which was last year, and then we'll go with two and two, and then we'll purchase the third vehicle in the fourth year too. So that, what we're doing is taking those vehicles that were taken out of service, we're using those on traffic details, so they're not pursuit, we're not using them as pursuit vehicles, and also we're using them at admin vehicles as well. So that last 10,000 between 120, 130,000, we're trying to squeak the last miles we can out of those things before we trade them in.
And, but they are getting, so, so the price here reflects a trade-in of some kind on-
As a matter of fact, those, those go to auction through the town, and the town it goes into general budget.
Okay, so you're not trading them in, but we're doing something, because we can't, under green communities, we can't pass them into-
No, well, you can, but not, by the time they get done, there's not a lot of life left in them, and there's only a couple of departments that we could do with. We did make the change where we upped the budget amounts for vehicles, so each line item request included purchase and outfitting of the vehicles. Several, $8,000 or something like that to fully equip, once you get it from the factory, it's another maybe five grand.
Six.
Yeah, five or six grand to outfit the vehicle. And so we were some, we were erring and not, or not erring, but we weren't carrying that cost necessarily in the vehicle purchase, because sometimes in the past we thought the trade-in would offset that. But the sale of the vehicles, as the chief noted, goes back into the general fund, and there are times where there may not be a lot of trade-in value left. We've experienced that with some of the cars, but the dealerships will give you a couple hundred bucks for it, I mean, and so we can't rely on trade-in value as a, as a source of revenue to offset those costs.
But how much do all the police equipment that's on the vehicles, we trade that in?
No, we transfer those, we transfer a lot of that over.
Like lights to the extent that we-
Yeah, but there's, there's a life expectancy with those as well. So whether it's, the lights will keep a couple of years, but the front pushbars have to be placed annually. In the last couple of years, the problem has been, we've transitioned out of Crown Vix, and we're going into Ford Explorers, as well as the Chevys and into the Explorers, so we had to buy all new equipment for those vehicles. But now that we're stabilized and the vehicles that we're going to be purchased in in the future, we'll be able to transfer most of that equipment over.
All the interior stuff like the laptop holder and all that?
Exactly, yes, that's what's going to happen. But there's a cost of transferring the equipment over too.
And, well, your new vehicles, one, are they here yet?
We purchased a vehicle, we just, we just received it a few weeks ago.
Few weeks ago?
And that's a Ford Explorer, it's interceptor. We've had very good luck with those, all-wheel-drive vehicles, and those are great for all, all types of weather. We have no issues of people, officers being stranded or stuck in the snow, which is outstanding. Also, it's a great platform because we store all our gear, it's all climate-controlled, as opposed to the old days where we used to store it in the trunk, and like our O2 or AEDs, we used to have to put those directly in the passenger compartment. So whenever you had to transport a prisoner, you have to take that equipment and put it back into the trunk. So it's a great platform for emergency use, and we're, it's a great utility vehicle for us.
Marie, yep?
I'll start with the police chief. Do you have any, last year, how many full-time benefit of positions did you have compared to this year? Is it the same? Are you increasing or decreasing?
We have exactly the same as we did last year. What we're starting to see though is there's been a higher demand from the schools on our SRO, and I, probably because she's doing such a fantastic job, they see the benefit of this. But what we're starting to see is an uptick in demand in the middle and elementary schools, believe it or not. That's where we've been a little bit, little bit strained, and we're looking to maybe add a part-time position next year, we'll try to see if we can do something from our staffing, and I don't know if I'm going to have to come back to you in another year, maybe two years to see if we need another full-time position for that as well.
And how many emergency, how many dispatchers do we have now?
We have four and a half dispatchers, and that half position, she also works as our records clerk, so two days a week she's in dispatch, three days a week she's our records clerk. So there's four, there's four and a half positions for dispatching, which is five employees altogether.
And we're looking at the regional rec is going to be onboard two, three years roughly?
We are targeting a go-live date of July 1st, 2019.
Oh, wow. And are there any costs in here in regards that we have to pay towards the regional rec yet? Nothing?
That's all grant-funded.
That's all grant-funded. Okay, and I guess the same question for fire chief, your full-time benefit positions, I know that you had, had a reorganization, so compared to this year, to the next year's budget?
So, this current fiscal year, we're at 24, and, or the two, because we did a staggered plan, went from 22 to 24, and then moved some positions, eliminated a captain's position, created a deputy chief position, so this budget reflects 24.4 of administrative assistance.
So from last year to this year's .4 difference?
No, actually, the 2018 budget and 2019 are the same amount of people. We did, we did all the increases in 2018.
Before you got here, I did announce that there are no additional FTEs on the town side.
Oh, you did? Okay, great.
Yep, so.
And then for, for the fire chief, I know that you've been, you're going to be working on the ambulance rates and things like that, and I saw that your insurance is going up, so you'll give us a full breakdown of what the costs are compared to what, what we're charging to bring in?
Yeah, and revenues from 2016 to 2018 were right around 24% increase from where we were to where we are now, and so we're having another good month this month, so we're ahead of where we were last year, so it continues to increase, so.
And all that money though goes towards the ambulance fund to purchase the next ambulance? It doesn't go into the operating budget?
A certain amount goes to the ambulance, a certain amount is covering the direct budget that you're talking about now.
Oh, it does?
Yes.
Okay. And what would that, what percentage? Do you break it up percentage or certain?
I think it's 600, 665, the first $665,000 goes towards operations.
Okay.
Anything above and beyond that, or if there's any left, anything above and beyond it, and revenue would go towards the ambulance fund, and then we also take a percentage of anything left over at the end of the year, we would also put that back in the ambulance fund also.
So when we look at the ambulance rates, you could break down what we pulled in and what the costs are going out to see where our coverage is at the grade?
Yeah, they're all broken down on line items, so.
Okay, thank you.
Chief Stankwitz, you've got a, I guess it's a new expenditure here for summer crossing guards? I assume that's new, or is that just more, more than you had in the past?
Well, no, it's exactly what I had, but what I did is I never budgeted for that. What I used to do is absorb it through the line, through line items at the end of the year. This year I did my calculations, and I found that, you know, I put it in the budget this year under the line item because they were under crossing guards.
So, so it's the same crossing guards we've always had at the-
Yeah, I have an increase in number of crossing guards now.
It's just related to pools and- It's just related to pools and that.
Thank you.
Yes, Marie?
Question I usually ask is, what didn't you get? You're hoping to get next year or was a, would really improve your budget to be able to, what is the project that could not get funded?
As, as far as, as far as what's going, this year, we're pretty much, we're pretty good as far as finances, as far as equipment goes. Again, we're going to be looking at dash cameras in the future. That's going to protect the public as well as protecting our police officers against misstatements. Also, we're looking at enhanced communication system, but with the regional dispatch, that, that's all going to be supplied for us. So there's really nothing on that end. Eventually, like I mentioned before, the SRO position, that's something that's, something we're going to have to strongly consider considering the amount of demand we have right now.
For the middle schools and elementary?
That's correct.
So that's like a budget structure for the future?
Yeah.
John, how about body cameras?
Yeah, we, we've looked at those. Right now, the backend, the server space is just, is too costly, and I don't see the benefit to that right now. Will it be in the future? Absolutely. We'll be going that way, in that direction.
Are there, are there, are the costs coming down as more and more people get into the business of providing? I, I assume?
Yeah, absolutely, it's coming down. You know, they're coming down to about 1,200 bucks a unit. The problem is, is the backend, the server space, plus public information requests. Once you start, once you start documenting every contact, then you're going to start seeing an increase in public information requests, which means what other police departments do is add in additional personnel to provide that information.
Now, we've started to be involved with the regional lockup to the sheriff's department?
Outstanding program, yep.
And has that reduced any of our overtime costs or anything like that?
Yeah, exactly. I'd be honest with you, I don't have a hard, concrete figure for that. But it has assisted us. Instead of us having to detain someone over a 12-hour period, we're able to transport them to the Hampton County House of Correction within two to three hours. They're, they have a better facility to not only monitor them, but also to treat them in the event that they're coming, you know, they're coming down off a high or drug-induced high. But also it has decreased our costs. I don't have that figure for you, but it has helped.
Now, do we have some, like, I have some concerns about ages of people going to the jail, because they are walked right into a, the main facility, into a pod. And so they're in like a regular jail, you know, like where, they're separated, you know, they're not in with state inmates who are coming down from murder charges. But they're in, you know, they're in that facility. And, and I think about, you know, I guess they have to be over 18 though, go there, right?
That's correct.
But you could have a 19-year-old who was home visiting his parents from college and find, would he find himself there?
Something like OUI, if they're arrested for OUI, unable to make bail, then we are transporting them to House of Correction. Yeah, could be a 19, 20-year-old, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. So they would, they would have a bail option?
Yeah, usually, usually the clerk will post the bail. They'll usually be released on their own in crack and cents, and the clerk's fee is $40. Most of the time, someone from our community, they'll have, someone will be able to provide the bail or the clerk's fee for them. So they're usually released. Usually those non-bailable warrants, those people who are unable to, who aren't allowed to be released, will be transported.
All right, yeah. Because it is, it would be a bit shocking for a person. I mean, it's one thing to go to our little lockup and then, but to go there, to go through a strip search and be escorted out to a pod.
Lesson should be learned.
Yeah, well, it's a real wake-up call, yeah.
Last thing to go.
Yeah. I don't think that's what people are generally expecting in a small town.
Don't break the law, you don't have to worry about it.
Marie?
And I wanted to ask the same question, chief. What didn't get funded that you hope to get funded next year?
So there's probably a few deferred items that we've looked, look at next year. Our rescue boat is 20 years, so we do need to do some refurb work on that. So that'll probably be in next year's budget, placing the motor and doing some stuff like that. So it lasts another 20 years. So we defer things, we try to, you know, we look at things at the end of year, money if that's available, to try and knock off some of those projects. But, you know, it, it gets tighter and tighter every year to do that. So then we do have to build into our, our budget. Big thing for me this year is, you know, we've got the people in place with reorganization, and I made some promises of things that we're going to do. Those are things that we're working on this year, the LEPC, fully up and running, inspectional programs, and those things are all moving, moving quickly, so.
And you use those, those letters, which means?
A local emergency planning committee, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Okay.
Just to follow up on that, one thing that, or an oversight of mine did not get transmitted as a recommendation to the capital planning committee was a, what he calls a chase vehicle for an extra, it's sort of administrative, sort of emergency response vehicle to replace an aging Taurus, Ford Taurus. I neglected to put that in my recommendation to the capital planning committee, but in the recommendation they presented to the board after Chief Dearborn had gone to speak with them, they did, there's 150,000 in the fire truck fund recommended, 40,000 of that is intended to be for the replacement of this chase vehicle. It just isn't specified in their recommendation, but that was the intent of that. Because 150 is way more than we usually put in for the fire truck fund. So the recommendation for planning committee is 110 for fire truck fund replacement, and then 40,000 for chase vehicles. That's one thing they didn't get from me that they were, that they should have.
Could you elaborate what a chase vehicle does?
It's basically, it's the same as a police cruiser. We utilize it for administration, command vehicle, you know, it has radios, the lights, it's similar to one of the vehicles we have now. It's an SUV, it looks just like a cruiser. So we use it for emergency response.
And it could be a Prius, right?
If we put a 100G on it on the back of it.
No, it could not.
No. Yeah, and I did, I did present that to capital planning, and it appeared to get full support there. And I think just the shuffle of miles of paperwork, it got pushed out.
And, and Dr. Metz, I don't think was explicit in making that apart of his recommendation, but it definitely was. And when we get into finalizing the warrant, it'll be shown that way.
Also in the capital plan, there's, although it's a facilities project, there's the fire station floor project. That's where you're ceiling the fire department floors. We've been talking about those for several years. I think we finally have a good, you know, good solid plan for fixing them. You know, the stations, that, that too is approaching 18 years. And the floors are, have spider cracks in them, and there's some damage to them just from, they get, you know, those vehicles are, you know, they're all day long. So, so we really need to address that. And that was a recommended project by capital planning also, so.
Okay. No further questions? Well, thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. Well, Beverly, you guys want to run up one? I know you were here recently.
They're okay to leave after they present, right?
Yeah. Put out some fires. Hopefully there won't be any. So.
So I was here a few weeks ago, and I talked about some regulations which ultimately were passed at the May 1st Board of Health meeting. But I see this period as a, for the next year or two, however long it takes, to be a period of transition where we at least examine whether there might be, whether we should be thinking about sharing either in whole or part the services that are currently conducted by a single town board of health with other boards of health. I think we need to go forward with that from a research perspective to really understand and look at what we do, what the health risks are in the town, and also see what our, what potential partners can bring to the table. And also, during the same period, there is a special commission for local public health, a governor's commission that's studying this issue. And they will have some, they have some ideas that are going to come out of that about minimum staffing requirements, credentialing of staff, the services, and other things that boards of health should be doing, and financing of all of this, which might mean no financing, or potentially could mean some kind of a per capita payment from the state, similar to what is offered in the state of Connecticut, where there's a $1 per person that's offered by the state to each regional board of health. There's state money. Right now, the activities of the board of health are fully funded on a local level. So this is going to take some time, and we've got, we're working with one potential partner now. We have a grant to look at how well Long Meadow and East Long Meadow could interact with each other. But Steve and I have discussed some other potential partners. So once we have this information, we can think about how to go forward. I'm not exactly sure that it's going to save money, may or may not. But the, the activities of the board of health have expanded, I guess I would call exponentially since I began many years ago. And all, for the most part, these are unfunded mandates, although they say that they're not going to do that. That's what it really comes out to be. And so, you know, there's certainly, once, with the help of the grant that I have and some additional thinking time, which I'll get to, I might be able to really consider how the, there might be an economy of scale. And I think my biggest complaint over the years is that there's been a proliferation of regulations. And so you have to always learn, I mean, you not only have to keep up with the new regulations, but oftentimes you need to get new certifications. So you're sending one person, being me, to school a lot of the time, and, and fees and licensure fees, which believe it or not are not significantly reduced for municipal officials, to learn a broader and broader, broader range of subject matter. So if you had a multi-town district, you could have personnel that are specialists in different fields. We don't have that many septic systems, so the ones we do are doozies. But I have to go, I have to be certified in that area. So if you joined with a number of communities, you could have a specialist that keeps their certification in septic and maybe one or two other areas, so that not everybody is certified in every subject matter. And the overall top administrative person is writing the grants, doing the budgets, and has a overall interaction with some people at the inspectional level, and has to have an understanding what they do, but doesn't necessarily have to stand there and understand how many inches the water goes down in a, in a perk hole, and how they got the figures. I mean, they discuss problems and management and approaches to compliance, rather than the specifics that are, that are handled in some of these certification courses. So I think that it's going to be a period where I'd like to sit down and see if I can bring to Steve and the select board information of how to proceed in, in the future.
To build on what Beverly's saying, I would, I would say there's, inspectional services is a bulk of the work, and that the requirements for those inspections are standard, usually across the state. But there's then, there's also the work of the board of health as a local policymaking body, where the policies they make need to be reflective of the community. And so we want to make sure that as we move forward, and, you know, we, we hope that Beverly stays with us for a long time, but succession planning is something we have discussed, and we want to be able to access better, not better options, but more options or more cost-effective options for inspectional services, so a board of health directors' time can be spent developing policy and administration at the local level. One of the things that you, she enjoys a fairly small budget, so when you make a, a change, the percentage jumps off the page. You see, we increased inspections, health inspections, $2,500, up to $3,000. A big part of that is, is looking to outsource inspections of pools. Beverly has to go out and, even private pools, has to go out and, and.
Country clubs.
Like, like field club.
Semi-public.
Yeah, semi-public, right. Has to go.
Georgetown apartments is an example, which is, the pool is actually in Long Meadow.
So she has to go, you know, crouch down, take a water sample, test every pool. That's, you know, that's not a great use of her time. And so can we find, do that on a contracted basis? And so this is something we're, we're going for this year. And it's a lot more difficult to find a contractor to do that than I think we initially perceived. But we are sticking with it, and whether it's either like East Long Meadow developing, someone who has the competency to do that, and we pay East Long Meadow to send that person over, or like she said, we're, we're looking at, there's an existing district that includes some belt towns surrounding communities, could we join them? And then maybe pay a fee to them for inspectional services, things like that. So these are all options that this grant we received from Pineapple Valley Planning Commission, we, we're just at the front, I think I reported on it last week, we're just on the front end of it. But we wanted to build a little bit of money in the budget to have, to have some ability to do a contracted service for inspections if, if something kind of materialized during the fiscal year.
Also see how it works out. We've never done that before. But also, we're one of the few departments that doesn't have a memorandum of understanding with another community. So some emergency arises, and I fall into a pool, or fall into, you know, a septic system. I mean, there, there is no backup. So we, we really need to think about these kinds of issues in the future.
There are 16 districts in the Commonwealth, so the wheel has already been invented. We just have to find the model that works for us.
Stephen, are you telling us that this $2,500 is partially offset by the PVPC?
No.
No?
No. That's, that is something we built into the budget before we got the grant.
Oh, okay.
It's, it's two separate things. It's, the, the goal is, we should, the directive was, let's find a way to contract our pool inspections. And it's not that Beverly can't do the pool inspections, but we're trying to transition, rather than make a big change in one year, trying to, you know, bite-sized pieces to, to do this. So the directive was, let's build something in the budget so we can contract out pool inspections, just to get us moving down the path to spin off inspectional services. After that, when we start talking about this further, and we start, actually, I think it was Beverly doing research, and Chad Thompson, and who's out there for vendors to do this, there really aren't very many people.
We're developing them as we go along.
We're developing as we go. I thought there'd be a, I almost said a pool of people. I, I thought there would be, you know, Yellow Pages of pool inspectors or pool inspection companies that could do this. It turns out there really isn't.
So you can't hire one of these pool companies?
Like Teddy Bear Pool Company, it's a different level of.
They don't want to do it. Nor do their staff want to do it as after-hours kind of work?
There's a certain amount of liability that goes along with it. So that's why we just, you know, it was a lesson learned for us. And in learning this lesson, we thought, well, maybe we just need to think bigger about this. And that's what's prompted the DLTA grants and the conversations with, the state has a, there is a Western Mass, a state health agent that helps coordinate these things, and she's working with us along PVPC. So I am, like Beverly, I'm optimistic that we're gonna, that we will be able to create a new paradigm that makes sense for us with regional partners. We're just, we're just at step one.
I am quite sure it's not going to be this fiscal year. It may not even be next fiscal year until we can get our act together. But I, I really feel as I look over, you know, the, the state, and certainly if you look on the national level, that, that rendering public health services, or the actual services on a single-town level does not really work that well. It doesn't poise us in a position of getting a lot of grants, because a lot of them have minimum population requirements. It doesn't allow us to, to work efficiently. And sometimes I really feel at some point, there's going to be a problem with competencies. And sometimes I really feel at some point there's going to be a problem with competencies.
So, these are all our goals?
And I know we had talked about the increased work that you're possibly going to get with the casino when it opens. Like, there could be more.
We don't know.
Exactly. And when we talked to other towns, they said the health department did suddenly have a lot more on its plate than it did before. And so, that's going to be a problem possibly coming up in another two to three years. So, I think it's good to look at, at new ways of doing things.
I, I, I asked some other towns to sort of join us in this sort of exploratory process. Some towns don't want to. They sort of want to keep their head in the sand. And, you know, maybe they would be more accepting of joining with us if they see that we have something concrete on the table. And they can visualize exactly how it would look, especially retaining policymaking on the local level rather than having a district board. So that their citizens can get exactly what, what is needed and necessary for their town, works for their town. But I really, you know, I think we should be at least, I think we should at least be ahead on this, of these developments and not stand there and wait till something is foisted upon us.
Have we reached out to Chicopee? Since they seem to like to work with us?
We have not yet. We just, there's a, there are a few more like-us options out there. Right, right now, we're, we're in discussions with East Long Meadow about it. We've got a lot of different irons in the fire, but the, we're going to hopefully meet in the near future with the folks from the Quabin District, which is, like I said, Belcher towns, close enough to us to, to make that doable. Like I said, the, it's all been done before. We just have to figure out what the right model is for us and either create a new one or join an existing one. But I, I am more optimistic about the timing than Beverly is. I think this is something that, like, like the regional dispatch with Chicopee, you kind of go along and research and try different things and look around and some things work, some things don't, and all of a sudden, you know, things just fall into place a certain way. The picture becomes really clear and everybody's moving forward really quickly.
I think it would be something like when, with the regional dispatch, other towns that bowed out will see it works if it does, hopefully. And then they'll come, be the same kind of, and people are just afraid to change.
Yeah. I, I think, you know, East, like I said, East Long Meadow is trying to develop a pool inspector who's, can have the insurance and the certifications you need to do this kind of work. I'm sure, you know, if that becomes a viable option, we'll contract with East Long Meadow. And I'd have to believe Camden, Wilbraham, you know, Southwick, all these other towns that have the same needs, will probably be giving them a call as well. I mean, this is, you know.
Actually, it's, our biggest problem in public health is creating a new generation of personnel. And that's something, sort of, what, sort of what East Long Meadow is doing is what people are trying to do all across the state is to develop a new core of inspectors as older people retire. So, we're often taking people and pushing them through online courses, short-term courses of various kinds, just to get people on the, you know, on the ground and get them into, into the field and then you can move them through the system. But, personnel is going to be a key factor in the next ten years as some of us gray out, myself included.
Stephen, what's, what's the point at which we decide that we can bring in revenue in excess of our expenses? If we became the pool inspector experts of the whatever, I mean, sometimes you want to judicially be the, be the leader, not the.
In-source rather than outsource.
Oh, but I'm just saying that.
Have people pay us.
Yes.
Right. Have people paying us. And I don't, and I don't know what the issue is and I don't know what it is, but is there a process by which we even look for that?
Yeah, I mean, the answer is it depends, like most things, Mark. And I think that the, if we had to staff up to be able to provide that, the level of service that's needed for someone to pay us, then that would be an expansion of our budget before the revenue would necessarily be realized. Now, you could do that on, on an MOA basis or something like that. But, where a town commits to paying you for the service before you've even developed the service. But I think, you know, the, the regional dispatch model, that, that isn't a cautionary tale of communities that just can't stay in on faith. They need to see it. Whereas, we, we, we believe it'll work. And as we're getting actually pretty close to starting to make some big decisions at the dispatch level, at their district level for the dispatch, I, I know more that it's going to work and I know we're going to be in the same situation here. I, I think it depends on the service and the availability of it. I, I'm not foreclosing that idea if it became an option for us for any of the services. In fact, I think, I, I just think other community, that, that's really more about other communities' tolerance for wanting to give up that local control than it is about our willingness to try it.
Right. But, there, I mean, we have examples in the past where East Long Meadow needed, our, our, our town nurse went to help out East, East Long Meadow and I don't know if we broke even or made money on it.
I think we, we basically, I know that we charged East Long Meadow not only her hourly salary, but we, we recouped the, the benefits.
We hosted the recycling, when, when Arlene Miller was the regional recycling, solid waste coordinator for DEP, we hosted and we got a little bit of money.
There's a lot of administration costs and employee benefits.
Right. But then that, she received her benefits from us. So, there is, you know, OPEB and retirement costs that go along with being the host community, which is why I think with our levy situation, I'm, I'm usually looking to pay another community for it versus us being the host.
I, I think you might recall that years ago, we had a regional tobacco grant. And there was, we were able to bring in some administrative overhead monies. And, you know, I, I wouldn't mind doing that except that they're not, when I look at who my partners would be, even four or five of us little towns do not meet the minimum population level that is required or our risks for certain, our risk factors, our health risks do not add up to making us be eligible for these grants. So, I mean, if it were available, we would have, we would have done it. And I look for it all the time.
So, Beverly, I mean, when we typically think of a health department, we do think about, you know, inspections and, and testing and so forth. But, you're saying the state's view of it is more public health is, is looking at how to affect, how towns are going to affect the health of all the residents in a, in a different way.
I think they're looking at it the same way. They're seeing inspectional services as being mandates because those services are done to protect the public health. If you don't have a restaurant inspector, you raise your risk of foodborne illness. So, I think they're looking at it that way, that there still is a need for these mandated services. But we're trying to prevent duplication of services. We're trying to make the administration a little bit smoother so that you could have specialists that really know that area and also a, an administrator who, whose time is not, who's paid basically for doing administrative services rather than doing inspectional services. So, I'll just take numbers. You don't have a thirty-dollar an hour person doing twenty-hour a week, twenty-dollar a week level services for half of their week, because that doesn't make sense. You have maybe one or two secretarial-type people, clerks. You have one, two, three, depending on how many towns join together, people at the inspectional service level. And then you have an administrator on the top, similar to what the larger departments have in this town, where they have divisional heads for different types of services that they provide. And then someone at the top that's, that's sort of directing traffic and the budgets and thinking about larger projects that need to be done. So, I think they're still thinking very much of the need for inspectional services and what credentialing needs to be at that level and what credentials are required at the top level.
Okay. All right. So, all right.
If that makes any sense.
All right. Well, thanks, Paul.
So, we're working on it. But this year is more or less the same, except a little bit, sometimes spent on thinking for the future.
Yes. Okay. Well, keep our eyes open. What's going to be next. All right. Thanks. And, no, at one point, we were going to make the transition into being a select board meeting and that was supposed to be at eight o'clock. And I wonder if we should make a formal transition?
See if there's anybody else here for the hearing though. Shouldn't actually see if there's anybody.
Yeah. Is there anyone else here for the open hearing, for the?
Just John President's here for the, he's here to speak on behalf of the CPA.
Okay. And we should do that.
But that's when we get into the warrant. Should we just finish up with the department heads quick?
Okay. Let's, all right. All right. Why don't you?
Did you want to call the select board meeting or just forget it?
You can.
That's up to you guys. I don't care. I don't, I don't stand on formality.
You don't stand, okay. So, well, we finish up the front row if you want to step up from the CPC.
No, no. Why don't we do the department heads first? Yeah, let's do, Paul, Paul, come on up.
Be aggressive or you'll be the last one here.
I'm a small piece of the pile like you saw on the boardroom. I did increase one line item by a thousand dollars for some code books that were required. But, I did some research after that and found out I could get them free if I joined the ICC for a hundred and fifty dollars. So, I saved some money there, so I can go back in.
I guess I, I just have one question, Paul, and that is, how is our permanent inspectors, electrical, plumbing, employee inspectors, working? Since I see that we're out constantly seem to be looking to hire them.
Looking what, man?
Looking, it's every time I see a posting for jobs, you know, I wouldn't say every time, but I've seen more than one posting for that job in the last year or so.
Really? We've got the same people?
No, we've got the same people.
Wasn't there just a posting for it recently?
No, that was a plumber for the.
DPW's hiring a plumber. Are we?
Yeah, we've had the same people for, for years now.
Okay. So, is that working well then?
It's working out real good.
Yeah, they have office hours that I think are, have been good to keep people up there. So, if he's out inspections, there's somebody covering it and, yeah. So, Marie, if she was going to ask what didn't he get?
What didn't you get?
Uh, I'm going to answer it for him and that is a, a percentage of the fines and fees that he brings into the office through his work. He would want a percent. He, he didn't get a percentage, but I'm sure he wants one because he brings in, and I want, Paul, he, the inspectors and obviously we have, Beverly Rose did retire. We, we're filling that position as we speak. But, the department does bring in a substantial amount of revenue for the town, largely through, and the other thing that I think Paul does, that you'll see when we do the warrant, is sort of a lot of the bylaw changes that we've been looking for over the last few years that have generated some of that fines, some of that fine income have, have really been things that he's pushed on.
The rental property registration has created, I think, ten thousand dollars we took in this year. And the foreclosed property, abandoned properties, we had twenty-four hundred, whatever you want that.
Now, is there anything, I know we had talked about the next generation of the foreclosed or rental properties. Is there something we need to change on that because it's not quite working for you?
No, it's, it's working good. And actually with the, the bylaw change, where I could add the, the fines to the taxes, we had like, I want to say twenty-four foreclosed properties. We're down to like four or five now that I know of.
Oh, great.
So, they're banks. I put pressure on the banks and they, they unloaded them.
Was there something, rather than what you didn't get, is there something that you would like to expand the program to that other towns are doing that we just haven't gotten around to being?
No, I think it's working pretty good what we have.
So, there's nothing missing? Like, we do the rentals, we do the foreclosures. There's nothing else out there that we should be doing? And then, I guess my other question is, when you have a big project like on Dwight Road, are you, how, how involved are you? Do you have to go down and do the actual inspections? Are you, at this point, really just checking out the plans? Because it seems like a huge job.
Yeah, it's controlled construction, so that takes a lot of pressure off of me, but I still do the inspections. But if I miss something, it's on the architect to make sure that it's right.
Are you charging enough for that or should there be?
Yeah, that was a, that was a twenty-nine thousand dollar permit fee, so we did all right.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you.
I, I think to answer your question, this, this really speaks to the bylaw stuff. We're, we're hopefully meeting tomorrow, whether it allows. But, even, even if the bylaw task, task force doesn't meet, I've talked to town council. We will be, I'll, I think we'll be putting forward a recommend, a recommended article to allow some level of commercial vehicle, you know, if it's a, a regular-sized pickup truck that has lettering and it really is just the guy drives around in it, should be allowed to be parked in a driveway of note if he lives in the house or he or she lives in the house versus, it, it turns into just one neighbor gets mad at another neighbor and they call us endlessly. And so, it's more wasting less of his time on a bylaw that is really kind of out of date than adding a new program. I think it's, it's continuing to refine our bylaws and mo, and really modernize them.
Now that you bring it up, there is a bylaw that I was wondering about. And that is when we have a burned-out property. I've seen in other towns where they can sit there for years. Is there anything that we have that protects us from a?
Well, the building code, you have to clean up the property. So, if, if you're talking about the one on Elm Street, I have some letters on that already.
No, no. I was talking about ones I've seen in other towns. So, is there a time limit to when they have to actually rebuild? Or it's just clean up and board it is all required?
Make it safe. That's what the building code says. There's nothing about rebuilding or, but it has to be made safe, which that was when I, I owned it.
But it could be sitting there for years.
Could be sitting there for a while, but I did put pressure on to clean it up. So, they're just waiting on insurance to handle it.
Do other towns have a bylaw or something to protect us from a, a property that's become damaged and then just sits there damaged for years?
If it's, if it's not safe, then like I said, the building code takes care of it. But, we don't have a bylaw specifically for that.
And do other towns?
I don't, I don't think so.
So, it's just something that can fall in the cracks, so there's not too much we can do about it. Okay. Thank you.
Any questions, Paul?
All right. Great. Thank you very much.
That can actually, Barry, you can actually toss that back over the chairs. Some people aren't.
Good evening, Barry.
Hi, everyone.
Actually, are people going to go back to the library budget or is Jean?
Jean's?
Ready to go?
She's just interested.
She's interested in them. First, first timer, that's why. She's interested in learning the budget process.
So, I actually, I should be short and sweet. My general fund allocation isn't particularly large. The biggest part of it would be the daycare salaries for Greenwood full-time staff, which is paid back at the end of the fiscal year, along with, and any benefits. Those aren't paid back to the general fund, but those are paid through the revolving fund, through user fees. It's level funded. We didn't add any positions. We, on top of the general fund allocations and the revenue side, the Parks and Recreation Department is in charge of building rentals for the town. And in the last fiscal year, that generated almost fourteen thousand dollars. And for those of you that don't know, we also are an acceptance agency for passports for the US Department of State. And last year, the net, the general fund was about seventeen thousand. We anticipate another three thousand on top of that because fees are going up, I believe, in the spring. So.
The, the, I think is the custodian for Greenwood is paid by our revolving fund?
A portion. I mean, most of, I mean, I would think his time allocation, in fairness, most of it is the, the recreation side of the building, not the council on aging. So, I, at least half of his salary is paid through revolving and his benefits as well.
All right. And the, so, in terms of our, like, summer camps and after-school activities and so with that, we've, we're, we're getting more participation in the after-school stuff, right?
And daycare. So, at Greenwood, we have the summer camp component and our numbers were up at least four percent. Different ages were up different amounts, but four percent in the day camps. And Greenwood Center as a whole, which is the, we count before and after school and the daycare is well over two hundred children. So, there's over sixty in the daycare, primarily preschool. Over forty of those children are preschool and then in the after-school and the before-school program are the rest of the children. So, we have more now than we've had in the last fifteen years. With waiting lists, by the way. All of the daycare classrooms are full with waiting lists. Some of them very long waiting lists.
And, and you think that's really a, a reflection of both parents working full-time, two full-time jobs? I mean, you really think that's, I mean, because we, we probably had that a lot, but it's just been an increase?
I think it's more of our conversion to part-time care, we didn't offer part-time care in the past. We started to integrate that about five years ago with the preschool, it's easier with the preschool, it's not as easy with the infants, but we are finding success with the toddlers and infants taking part-time spots as well. So it's maybe more of a change, I think we've seen two-parent working families for decades now.
Yeah, so you, but you've made the adjustments that really better fit the community?
I think so.
Yeah, okay, thank you, Barry, well, Mark and then Marie.
Paul, can you just explain to me how the revolving fund revenue offsets the daycare staff expenses? Or maybe Barry, you can do that.
The mechanics of it?
Right, because I'm trying to find where the revenue is for-
The revenue will be on his overview page, on page two, Mark, and it's the amount of three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars is in there on line fifty-three, but the mechanics of it is simply that the statute does not allow the revolving fund to pay full-time salaries and benefits, so the town, the general government raises that money through taxation, basically, and through the appropriation process, and the revolving fund, who takes in the fees, reimburses us for all those expenditures related to the direct salaries and the employee benefits.
And that, that's part of, so I see there it's under local receipts?
Right, yeah.
And also, the revolving fund mitigates the need for the general fund to subsidize rec programs.
Correct.
Right, that I understand.
Yeah, the camps and stuff like that are, they're not self-sustaining, but they are sustained in combination with the fees we charge for the programs, plus revenue from the children's side.
But operating expenses of those programs, for example, referees or something like that come directly out of the revolving fund as opposed to the daycare?
Right, there's a lot of part-time employees, even, there's some part-time employees in the daycare program who get paid directly out of the revolving fund, because again, it's the full-time salaries that we're talking about budgeting for, and then the line items before you, or, you know, whether it's even camp counselors, lifeguards, all those are paid directly, because they're not full-time benefit employees, can be paid directly out of the revolving fund, which they are.
And to give you an idea of F Y seventeen, the revolving fund revenue was one point two nine two, almost one point two nine three, so that was the revenue.
And at the end of the year, do we have to, if you will, true up or net out the revolving fund? Or it just carries over because it's a revolving fund?
Carrie, you may recall about four or five years ago now, it was rated, our management said that we had a deficit.
Right.
That has since turned around, where we are now have a surplus at June thirtieth over the last two or three years now, I believe. So she's allowed to carry, carry that forward according to the statute to a certain degree, she's allowed to carry that forward, there are limitations.
At what point does that have to get moved into free cash or stabilization?
Statute says if there's over twenty thousand dollars, it's ten or twenty thousand dollars off the top of my head, but the issue is, even though you look at it on a cash basis, you might see that the revolving fund has maybe seventy or eighty thousand dollars, so it's on June thirtieth, a lot of that money was collected in June that are actually going to pay for July and August services, so once you back those out, it kinda comes out to a, I don't say a break-even.
So you kind of accrue it rather than cash basis?
Right, right, something closer to zero.
I'd like to add to that, too, because the department is cyclical, we're taking camp registration, selling pool passes in May and June, and then paying staff July and August, so we are given some leeway with those expenses.
Okay, Marie.
Have we ever thought about building in a small fee for O P E B, so we can make an O P E B payment at the end of the year?
I, we have.
We are, they, we do charge them when we do all the indirects. Not only will they pay their direct charges for the health insurance, but there also is a small amount that goes towards O P E B.
Also, how much did we put in last year for O P E B?
Well, it was a couple of thousand dollars, it's really based upon, when I get the actual, the new actuarial study, daycare is broken out, there's many of the cost centers that are broken out, and daycare is one of them, but I usually take a percentage of the liability, and then that's how I apply the charges, and the daycare really does have a small O P E B liability, if you look at it, and its own little fund. But the water and sewer also get charged a portion also.
And then, is there a revenue source out there that we haven't been able to access because of facilities or the budget that is on the horizon?
Not because of facilities and budget, I think one of the things that we re-instituted as a department that we're excited about is adding more free events, free public events, cultural events, that when the economy started to turn, we really didn't have, I mean, we operate a revolving fund, so we usually, our pricing method is cost recovery, so we're not charging overages, so we can't afford, unless we find sponsorship or grants, to do the free concerts. We added a free concert this summer, we added a, we re-instituted the fishing derby, which we're pretty excited about, so more community events, and that was in our G F O A for last year, and then we hope again to, to achieve that at a higher level next year. But we find ways, to answer your question, no, we find ways to add programs.
An outdoor N H L hockey game.
I wanna do floor hockey at Greenwood, we'll talk about that, Southwick Rec Center does it, and it's a great program, so.
Now, when I look at other resources available to you, like Turner Park and Bliss, I mean, could we ever expand summer programs to those parts of the town?
We've thought about it, we could, and we have Turner specifically, we have at Bliss, the issue becomes storm warnings or weather warnings and no bathroom facilities, but we've done, we've done excursions, we've done things, outdoor adventure-type things at Turner Park and Laurel.
And so, so we have to, so to do something like that, you have to sort of spec out what it would cost?
Yeah, I mean, we've done it, we've done fishing programs at Turner, so it didn't have to be a full-day camp, Greenwood is our home, so Greenwood makes the most sense to run our day camps, where we have full facilities and a swimming pool. We have done, we've done programming at Turner.
And, but they have those sort of toilet structures that don't use water, that are just composting? Is that a possibility for something like that?
It is until we get a thunderstorm or something along those lines, we haven't quite figured that out, the shelter part of it yet, which is one of the reasons we don't run a lot of summer programs at the Wolf Swamp Fields, which is going to quickly become the center focus for the department in terms of field use and renovations and things like that. We typically don't run programs where we can't, in, you know, in an emergency, very quickly get children into a safe place.
Right, yeah.
So we'd have to build, we'd have to have a structure, I would think.
It has to be something that protects children from lightning and anything, and we just, that's prohibited, you can't have something that just inflates and, you know, or-
Probably not, which is actually why Turner's so nice for the shorter programs, the three-hour group building, we work with Next Level Adventures, and we've done things there, as I said, we've worked with the Division of Fisheries and Wildlife to do learn-to-fish programs out at Turner, so the one-to-three hour programs work well there.
Yeah, well, 'cause the other side would be that if you decide, if you say, okay, you know, if we got composting toilets and we got some sort of a temporary structure we could use just for the summer, to protect children from lightning and storms and so forth, and spec out what those would be, I mean, there's a possibility some folks in the community could donate money for something like that, too.
Absolutely.
And, because I just, I look at Turner and I just think of the beautiful woods, and, you know, the dogs in town have a great time there, and their owners.
They do, Turner's my second favorite park in town, I love that park.
You know, it would be great if our children could get in there, now, the other thing is, I saw this thing about the funding that was just, the governor's office put out this government, this funding for regional trails program, they increased the money from one point two to one point eight million for helping communities make walking, biking, running trails, safe and more convenient, and, I mean, do we, are we gonna seek a piece of that?
We always look, a lot of the grants are, and I think maybe it was, maybe it was Jean from the library that said that our community has demographics that are so small that they limit us oftentimes, I found that, that grant I didn't know about, but a lot of times with, like, the urban self-help grants and things along those lines, they're population-based, and we don't meet the criteria, we do meet some, I mean, we have our open space plan that is still active, which, believe it or not, I mean, that makes us eligible for some of those grants because we have a long-range plan, but a lot of them were limited.
Yeah, 'cause I keep seeing more and more about the overlap between sort of public health and recreation, and, I mean, do you hear much about that in your-
Well, I work with Beverly quite a bit, she mentioned the tobacco grant, and I remember collaborating on that when we got that, we've worked on sun grants, so there is, there's an overlap in service that we, we take advantage of.
Yeah, because we have so many people who, you know, I mean, there's a lot of children in the community that, I don't think we have the obesity problem some other communities might, but we have a lot of indoor screen users.
I think many communities, yes. Which is why we, I mean, we choose our programs that, to get out and to be active, and all of our programs, really. Leisure-based.
Okay, thanks, Marie.
I just wanna make one pitch for getting back in the capital plan dredging Laurel Pond.
Why didn't you do that when Mario was here?
I wasn't here, but I think, doesn't Parks and Brack also make recommendations for a five-year, ten-year plan for capital? I know that was on for a while, and then it's drifted off, it'd be nice for it to come back on again.
It's probably overdue at this point.
Yeah, 'cause Robin was talking about it when I first came on the board.
Before the charter, I think when, when I still did the capital plans, I think I had it.
Oh, so you don't do the capital plans, it's all Mario now, so you don't make recommendations from Parks and Brack?
I make suggestions, and he's very good about taking suggestions, but that probably did fall a little far off the radar.
Okay, thank you.
But we are having the fishing derby this year?
April twenty-eighth at Laurel Pond.
April twenty-eighth.
So I said Turner was my second favorite park, Laurel Park is my favorite park. Twenty-eighth, very early in the morning, seven AM.
Yeah, some people get there much earlier.
They do. Sometimes the police, yes, they have, I mean, the fish have a police escort. People do.
Yeah, well, to make it fair, it's a derby.
Seven o'clock, huh? I look forward to seeing your report on how that went.
We've actually, when Bob Parsons was still active on the force, the fishing derby is the John Barkman Fishing Derby, and that was his uncle, and they did, we had the fish release, we usually don't release the date and time when we do that to the public, because we don't want people there, but they do guard the fish overnight.
That's good, that's a, make it fair. All right, well, thank you, Barry.
Lena and Jim, you guys probably come up together.
All right, the seniors and the vets, and there's a lot of overlap there anyway, so.
They're suite mates.
We're doing well with it.
Yeah, we're making it work.
All right, so, you know, as you look at your budget, is there anything that you wanna share with us about it?
No, I think it's pretty cut and dry, there's not a lot there to go over, so, I mean, if you guys have any questions, I'm happy to answer, but.
Okay. Shall we start, now, there's, I don't know if the changes, we have the-
There does, there is a thirty-three point three-three percent increase, it looks like a very large increase.
All right, supplies?
Am I looking at the right line, yeah, for expenses, and I'm actually, it's conferences and expenses that line up, so.
Mm-hmm, okay, and the, now, does veterans, like, when you do ceremony or different events, does any of that go into the budget for your-
That's actually what the increase I requested was for, was that we did the National Purple Heart Ceremony last year, was the first year that we did it, and it ran about a thousand dollars total for the whole thing. That was the tent, that was the, that was everything for the actual ceremony.
Yeah, and the, all right. I don't know, yes?
Just a quick question for, I don't know, Lena, if it's for you or Paul, but how are we doing on reimbursement for the veterans' payments, benefits versus state?
I think they're status quo, the state is about twelve to fifteen months behind.
So what we're showing here is expenses, but the revenue is in local?
Right, we're gonna show current expenses, but the revenue now, I mean, the good thing is, is that we've, we've been at this level of benefits for a few years now, so that those benefit levels from maybe the end of F Y fifteen, the hundred, where we spent the hundred and four thousand are now almost equal to what we're expending now, so it's, the level is, they reimburse us for a hundred percent, but the levels are much more higher between, the, the levels are much more equal now we put between what we're expending and what we're receiving from the state.
And where does, where does that come into state, state, is that part of state aid?
Right, it's gonna be part of the state aid number, all other on line thirty-six and page two.
Okay, thank you.
I guess I have two questions, one is, I know that you've started expanding your services to the families.
Yes, ma'am.
And is there enough, were you able to expand your budget enough to do that, or?
With what I'm doing now, I'm reaching out to the families, they come in, we discuss things, we have, nothing that I'm doing at this point is a cash expense, it's more of time and investment in that way. At some point, I would like to, if it becomes a necessity, maybe start a group for family support and things, 'cause there's a lot of caretakers that take care of veterans in Long Meadow, and that's, it's a hardship for them, just emotionally, so maybe something like that at some point, but right now, it's more of just an investment in time.
I guess my second question's for town manager, it's an issue I know since I've come on the board that's been lying out there, and I, we're not looking at a new center for a couple of years at least, and that is a private office for them to be able to work.
One of the things I wanted, I was gonna mention, was two of the changes that we, one of the changes that we initiated before Lena started, was taking the position from being hourly to being salaried on our professional administrative technical, and that gives us the ability to have, you know, evening hours or off-hours and not have to worry about, you know, overtime situation that would, you know, blow through our salary line, and whereas Lena can earn comp time under our personnel manual. The other innovation is one that Lena brought to us, and that was, you know, they make Bluetooth portable printers, and most town employees, as a part of our upgrades, it's all got laptops, so now she has, and she's been very good about doing this last couple of weeks, having veterans meet her at Police Department Community Room, Town Hall Meeting Room, and other places, so they can have private conversations, she can get online, fill out the forms, print them right there with a portable printer, and so we've kind of figured, she figured a workaround for how to do that, which is, so far, so good?
Well, actually, I don't have the printer yet, we're doing manual forms right now, which is good on a lot of different levels for me, 'cause I'm still doing disability claims, but yes, it's working out fabulously, and with the portable printer, it will come into play, and it will be a benefit, because I know there's at least two disabled veterans right now who are kind of, can't leave their home so well, so that will be something where I can take it there, and as Stephen said, I can print everything out right there, they can sign it when we're there, and we can get the claim in that day.
No, that's good news, yeah, 'cause that's, you know, it's tough when you're dealing with people, and you really need privacy, you know, so it's glad you found a-
Stephen and Deb have been wonderful, I just pretty much send Deb an email and say, hey, can I have the room at this date and time, and there hasn't been one conflict so far, and we have backup places if that is, the conference room is taken.
If accessibility is an issue, they can find our meeting room, that's accessible, we can, you know, we don't have tons of meeting space, but there's usually something available that can accommodate. The other thing is, and we'll get to Jim's budget, but Jim has expanded kind of evening programs at the adult center that we hadn't really done very much of, and so we're trying to build where Lena can have evening office hours for veterans who may be younger and working, and one of the things she has done is, I think, connected with the younger generation of veterans, more so than I think, we've wanted to do it, every veteran's agent that we've had has wanted to do it, but I find that, you know, having some flexibility with time, with work hours, provides that ability, and then having the center open does give a place for people to go through it and meet with her, if, you know, an offsite meeting isn't working.
Marie?
Does she, do you have the ability to get Wi-Fi, you know, there's a, the-
The card.
Yeah, the card to be able to, even if-
I don't right now, I have talked to I T about that, it's something that I have discussed with them, we're working on it, but I don't at this point, no.
'Cause I could see you need to get on the portal, and a lot of houses don't have the Wi-Fi you're gonna need.
Luckily, if I have to, if, until that happens, I, like I said, I can print out a form and, you know, hand-print it, it's not the end of the-
a form and, you know, hand-print it. It's not the end of the world. And I can have the veterans sign it right then. There's a, there are workarounds. I'm, I'm, I'm still in the military, and so I'm very good at workarounds and making things work if I have to. So, but yes, I have spoken to IT about that.
And you have enough in your budget for future programs that you want to do, such as like socials or things like that? Is there a little room in there?
I, I, I do really well with what I've got. I'm actually have an event in May that I put together, and I found a sponsor. It was, I needed a small amount of money for the banquet room that I wanted to rent or to use, and I found a sponsor for that with the help of Jim. And so actually, it's going to, I think it is going to be a pretty great event, and it's really, it's, I've done it for free, pretty much.
And what's the event?
It's, have any of you ever seen the movie Black Hawk Down? Probably. Well, that's actually based on the Battle of Mogadishu, and actually, no one of the pilots that actually flew in the Battle of Mogadishu, his name is Jerry Izzo. And I've met Jerry Izzo a few years ago, and I may have sent him a message and said, "Hey, what are the chances of you coming to Long Meadow and telling your story to us?" And he said, "Sure, when do you want me there?" He's going to fly himself in, because one of his things on his bucket list was to be a commercial pilot, so he's coming in free of charge. He's not charging us for it. He said, "Buy him lunch. I can do that." And Marie, you had actually spoken to me, and this is what I tied together, I didn't know about the pilot who had been killed in Long Meadow a few years ago. And so what I've done is, is Jerry's going to speak at the high school, and we're going to have a meet and greet at, in Springfield. And any funds, I'm asking, I created an event, Bright Page, and it's, I'm asking for a minimum of a $5 donation, and any funds that we make are going to be made to the Knights of, the Knights of Heroes Camp, and it's a, it's a summer camp for children of fallen heroes. And the fund ends, sponsor a cabin in Moose's name, and so all the money will be made, donated in his name to that charity.
Oh, that's a wonderful event.
Yeah, that's very nice. We'll work for that fire. Yeah. I think I've seen some advertising already on that, right?
Oh, I've been working on it.
Yeah, okay, good, good. And, and so, with the council aging, and, and I know you've been busy. You've had some good activities, you know, that have been well-attended this year, right?
Yes. Yeah, we've done a good job expanding our programming. I did submit a level-funded budget. We did have a couple areas that there was an increase. I think our COA other line item went up by a thousand dollars. The reason why is we, you know, we are doing more outreach visits now, now that I have my full-time outreach coordinator on board. She's responsible for going out into the community and doing assessments with our Meals on Wheels clients. She's visiting more people that are at risk. She's getting those house calls to kind of check in with people to see any types of services that the council might be able to offer, whether it's in-home services or trying to get that person to integrate into the senior center. So that was one area that was an increase. I think we had our telephone expense went up a little bit, and then our administration costs went up because with the new hire, we were in a little bit of a transition with that position, but when she came in, she was at a little bit of a higher step grade, so that's reflective of the increases in our budget.
And you like the, you know, are you, can you get grants for public health for, like, working with people with diabetes? Because I would think you'd have a good handle of that population in town that might be able to actually participate.
The main grants that we get right now are the Formula Grant from the state, so that kind of supplements some of our employee costs. And then we also get our Title III Nutrition Grant, and that funds our kitchen staff and then associated costs with our nutrition program. So those are the two major grants that we get. We do try to get a lot of different sponsorships to support different kinds of programs and events that we offer. Then we also do get a lot of things from, whether it's the town and cultural grants or when we're working with our Friends Group.
So, if I-
Yes, please.
So one of the things, speaking of, excellent segue, Jim, in the warrant, there is an article for a revolving fund to kind of change the dynamic of how funding flows through the Adult Center. And we started, the idea was actually hatched by Amy Sato, the previous director, but Jim's done a good job kind of working with Faloka and doing that in a way that they support, kind of building Faloka's support for this new, for this transition and new structure, because it means a lot less money will be coming through Faloka's hands. The, to the, to the senior who goes to the center every day, they're likely to not notice any difference in how the Senior Center operates. It's just the funding mechanisms, but the revolving fund, I think, is going to be a big thing for the town to kind of consolidate revenues that come in, be the recipient of the grants, and do it's more work for him. But I think it is the right thing for the center going forward, and Jim's done a good job kind of picking that up and, and working with Paul to get it to you guys to consider putting on the warrant. And like I say, he's expanded evening programs and come up with some pretty innovative things. So I want to commend the work he's done on that, and obviously, the budget is level service. One of the things that he has done is, he's been a leader on the dementia-friendly community project. I think, if you guys have been getting emails, but there's a, there's a series of events throughout the year on Long Meadow's dementia-friendly efforts in partnership, and he didn't do it by himself. The best part is, he partnered with local community stakeholders like JGS and Glen Meadow and, I don't know if Emerson Manor-
Yeah, Alzheimer's Association.
Alzheimer's Association to make sure that everybody's kind of working together, so.
Great. Any other questions for Jim?
Yeah.
I want to, yeah, commend you. It looks like a level budget, but it really isn't because you've brought so much in the private-public partnership. I mean, the amount of money that you've raised and on the, your bulletin alone, and then you've brought in some other sponsors to do some of these evening programs, and so it's really a much larger budget, but it's not coming out of the general fund.
Thank you. I thought, you know, the newsletter was one area that needed to be, needed to be enhanced, the look of it, but then also the publication part and working with the company that we did select. It was kind of a no-brainer as far as the cost-cutting to the Friends Group and to be able to save those money in turn to be put back into programming and services as we go forward. And then when it comes to the sponsorship, there's so many community organizations out there that want to partner with us because they're trying to reach our demographic. So making those relationships where their marketing dollars are going to be able to support bigger types of programs, bigger types of events that, you know, are not coming out of any town finances, and then in turn, it's not coming out of our Friends Group. So it's kind of supplementing costs to offer bigger and better things.
It's a great idea.
Mark?
Yeah, I was just hoping that we could get some kind of a summary of what, the things that will be in the revolving fund, and maybe the things that won't be in the revolving fund. You know, I presume that, I, I don't, I don't know if the, if there's any revenue from, you know, we each get, or at least I get at home, the, the voice newsletter. I assume that there's some advertising revenue that goes beyond just what it costs the, the company to produce it, but what is it that's included in our revolving fund?
Revolving fund is going to take care of their activities for the most part.
Okay, so trips and classes and-
Right. If, if they have, yeah, trips, classes, and programs that go on in the afternoon, those types of things.
The checks will be made out to the town along Meadow now.
The checks will be made out to the, on, on Meadow. It's kind of the things that are the quick pro quo, that a service is provided and a fee's going to be done. We've kind of said that they would still be able to operate their, their store as they do, and that would all be run by Faloka. Faloka would be able to maintain that. And then Faloka, any of the donations that are sent via the newsletter, those would all go directly to Faloka also, because really, there's, there's no programming there. There's, there's nothing that they're paying for. So the meals on, all the meals programs will now go through the revolving fund also now.
Okay, but do I presume then that, I won't say salaries, $10.99 or whatever for people teaching French or teach, that's all coming out of the revolving fund, all that work time?
Because the revenues and all the cash goes through the town of Long Meadow, we will automatically take care of that in the $10.99 process.
Through the revolving, but it'll be coming out of the revolving fund.
Right, right. Again, if there's, if there's collections for a program, and the recipient or whoever's putting on that program is over $600 in a, in a check, they're going to be flagged for a $10.99 at the calendar year end, so we'll have that take care of also.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, Marie?
Question I like asking everyone. You had more money in your budget. What would you like to have done?
Well, I mean, since we're talking about programming, I would like to, you know, always look at maybe adding part of my programming staff, whether it be another part-time position or, you know, maybe down the road, having somebody full-time in place that really could expand our programming even to a different level, whether it was to continue to offer nighttime things, to offer additional types of trips or travel opportunities. So, you know, obviously, when you have more people part of your team, you're able to build a capacity a little bit more. So, right now, I mean, since it's my first budget, I'm just kind of trying to get a sense of, you know, the types of things that we're good at doing, the types of programs that we offer, the types of things that are attractive to people, and really kind of taking all that information and, you know, kind of strategizing a couple of years down the road. So, long, the answer short, it would be probably in the areas of programming.
Thank you. Lena?
Probably trips, or more outings, since I've been there, because the group, the veteran circle group in Long Meadow was not somebody that usually left the center. They usually watched movies, was what I was told when I got there. Since then, since I've been there, we've gone to the Sturbridge, or, I'm sorry, to Sturbridge, and actually, I don't know if you know this, but all of us got in for free. We could have taken 12 people for free. There was two retirees, and I still have my DOD card, and with one DOD card, you can get four people in for free.
Oh, wow.
So we went on the trip, and I had a receipt for like $200 and something, but we paid nothing. We've been to the Armory, the Springfield Armory we went to, and we actually went to one of the Vet Center Berber Caves. They have one at the end of each month in the summer usually. Maybe a trip to the National Purple Heart Museum, maybe, I know it was a talk in the past about going to Washington. That's really a little more expensive, but it would be more things for camaraderie. They really didn't know anything about each other when I got there. We've had this, this was an actual conversation, and now they don't, like, when we go on these trips, they don't stop talking from the time we get onto the bus to the time we get off, and they know so much about each other, and it doesn't matter what their political, religious, or economical background is. They're all brothers when we do these trips, and they know so much about each other. I had a meeting in January, where our meetings are usually 45 minutes, and I just had them sit down around a table and talk to each other. We were there for like two, two and a half hours, and nobody was in a rush to leave.
Wow.
So I think things to build more of that.
Great, thank you.
It's funny, is you ask that to everybody. I would be like salary line item.
Oh, that would be your thing?
I think my answer would be the director's salary, right? God bless you guys. God bless these guys. They're so good. That would have been my answer, but nobody gave that.
Well, I'm not asking you.
I know.
All right, well, great. Well, thank you for sharing.
Thanks, guys.
So much.
Do you want to kind of close up the budget or jump right into it, get John out of here at a reasonable hour?
We could close, I guess we could close the budget discussion.
Yeah, sure. John, you want to?
So, the fish are starting to eat?
Sort of.
Sort of. So, good evening. My name's John Bresnahan, representing Community Preservation Committee tonight. So I know that we've, it's a great committee to be on. It's rigorous discussion about the, after public meetings and public hearings and going through the applications. It's a, it's a very, very fulfilling committee to be on, so I'm glad to answer any questions you have about this year's projects.
Okay, great.
Do you know what this year's projects are?
All the projects are within the warrant.
Right, I guess, I guess the bigger question, John, is at this point, it's kind of a done deal. I mean, you know, we may have questions, but we have no input, right? I mean, the input should have happened, if we had input, let me put it better, if we had input, we should have done it during your, or prior to your deliberations, because at this point, it, it, they're part of the, the warrant. I mean, I'll go back and tell you, my one thing is, I still don't understand, and I don't care what anybody tells me, why we can't do it in one warrant article, or three warrant articles, one for, you know, one out of each bu- bucket of the community preservation. I just don't-
We got an opinion on that, you know?
Did, did we get it?
Yeah, we got a legal opinion on that. Last year, we did. Yeah, so I mean, it's, it, I think, I think Mike, I know Steve Weiss talked to the association, and I think Mike Schneider also looked at the statute. I don't know if we got a formal legal opinion or if we're just told, but-
I thought it was a formal legal opinion.
Yeah, we, we did ask that question last year, Mark, because I'm with you. Needing a shortened town meeting is something I fully support.
Because we avoid seven articles on the, this year's warrant.
Right.
Yeah, I just, while John is here, I, I do want to just commend the, we call them the CPA Committee. They call themselves CPC. We call them CPA, because Capital Planning Committee, we call CPC. To avoid confusion, we call them CPA. But, you know, they are an independent committee. As Mark noted, what they decide to do with their CPA funds goes to the town voters directly, not to the, not to the select board. And they do take their committee, they do take their work very seriously, and they ask great questions. And I think that as an independent body, they're a great partner for the town, for the big T-town, because you can see that annually, a significant chunk of their expenditures go to town buildings, to town facilities, to support town programs, and the, the members of the committee are great and patient, and like I said, engaged and ask a lot of great questions. So I want to thank the committee through John for the work that they do every year. It's been, it's been, it's great every year to work with them.
Okay, Marie?
I want to say I'm so pleased to see you really putting in projects there to fix the parks up. And like, you have planting trees, you have got dealing with the trails and everything like that, and I think over the years, we had so much money we had to put aside for big projects like the tennis courts, that everything else was pushed aside. So thank you for turning your attention to that.
And again, our attention is turned to grants that are submitted to us.
Yeah.
So it's, it's not that we're soliciting grants, but interest of a, any citizen in town to come forward to us, that, that focuses us on that, that particular project. So I agree with you.
Yeah, so actually, you are the hidden source that a lot of residents don't realize that if they wanted to, like, you have, we have these empty greens in some neighborhoods, they could always just put a project to you.
Absolutely.
And so I'm glad to see then some residents, and you're, you're following through and accepting them, so that's great.
And it was a great project put forward, actually by one of the conservation members this year, and it was very low cost, but it was building benches down at the Riverfront Park. So what a great idea, you know, because as a conservation member, we've had several types of benches, stolen already down there. So these are big, heavy cement benches that will be anchored, and so just small things like that can make a big difference in town.
What are mold, what are these molds that, I mean, are we going to be sitting there pouring plastic into molds to make?
You're welcome to go to DPW when we do this.
No, no, but is the DPW going to be-
You want to be more involved.
Is the DPW going to be pouring molten plastic in?
Correct. So the outcome was David DeMayes, and he did a lot of background work, searching the internet for these reusable molds, and they're literally cement molds. And he worked with DPW and says, "Look, is this something that we can implement within the town, and I can use on my riverfront project?" The DPW was all over it. They thought it was a great idea, so yes, they are reusable molds. And they literally pour cement and then put them together, build them together.
Oh, so, so that's the, they're pouring cement in these molds?
Correct. So envision it that the sideboards of the bench are cement, and then you'd have plastic or wooden slats that you would sit on.
Yeah, okay, that'd be great. And then people could bring their own portable grills, I guess.
Absolutely.
And then a picnic out there. Sounds great.
It's a great resource for the town, the, so I'm, again, the way the boards made, our committee's made up also is wonderful. They have different representations from different boards in the town, and also at-large members. So I'm a conservation member, so I think that resource of having riverfront access for the town along Meadow is, is awesome. It's great.
Oh, yeah, it's underutilized, that's for sure.
I agree.
Unless you're underutilized.
I do see folks down there. When I go down there, there's people who like, at the end of work, you know, they go down there.
Inexpensive beer.
Let me know if they're putting picnic tables in the back of their trucks.
Yeah.
Well, we might need to get, you know, they, at Putnam Vocational High School, they would make these, these big metal garbage can containers. These are all through the city of Springfield. It'd be interesting to see if we could get some of those down there.
It's a haul-in, haul-out.
Yeah, hopefully people haul it out. There are some cans down there.
Yeah, and every once in a while, we get some reports of some, probably kids down there not taking care of it, and the DPW goes in periodically and kind of cleans it up. But I think if, and I agree with, Dave DeMaye was on our original DPW task force, and he did do it, I was there for the presentation. He did a nice job researching, and I think if you had a little more, an amenity like this, that was a little more stable, that can't be lit on fire, or hopefully not thrown into the river, it would take a, take a hell of an effort to throw something like this into the river. I think you would get more people using it. And the more people you have using it, the less likely there is to be trouble down there, or the more frequently we'll have, you know, people saying, "Hey, listen, it needs to be cleaned up," and everything else. So I, I think it's a, it's a good project.
Yeah, Mark?
Yeah, John, one of the warrant articles, and I made a comment on it a couple of weeks ago, I guess, in our meeting here, it's the Wolf Swamp Ring Road, and it's $100,000 for Phase One. Did you ever get a sense from, of what the- Did you ever get a sense from, of what the full project is? Because I really think that, when you ask the town for $100,000 for Phase One, you ought to be saying it's $100,000 of, a $170,000 project, or $100,000 of a $20 million projects, and it wasn't in there.
Correct. So, this is a, it's a great question, and this is a phase project, but it's an important project, and there's actually two groups coming together to work on this project. And over several meetings, only been several years, we've asked both of the parties to give us a master plan, because we're going to agree to funding $100,000, we want to see exactly what this is going to look like at the end of the road, no pun intended, for the Ring Road, but I mean.
The end's going to look just like the beginning, if the Ring Road happens.
Right. So, we were satisfied that there was progress along those steps, Mark, in terms of coming together, and certainly, safety was the first and foremost, and improving the parking down there. And this Ring Road, after looking at all the different plans that were submitted by town, looked like probably the best-case scenario.
Right, but, but is, still ought to be a total estimated final cost.
We're working on that. It's our, you know, it's our submission, you should be asking me.
I understand it's our submission, but he's on the community preservation.
Correct.
And they're approving $100,000, not knowing whether $100,000 is going to even get the thing going, and whether they're going to come back to you for a million dollars, or $100,000 10 years in a row, or 25 years in a row, or one year.
And applicants understand that, that we're going to fund what you asked us for, don't come back to us unless there's a, an addition or an enhancement to that project.
But you don't know if the project can be achieved with that $100,000.
So, one of the things, if I can, they weren't given that information. This has been kind of an iterative process, where we've, we came up with an estimate for Ring Road, and then at the same time, we brought in a civil engineer to kind of do more options, I guess sent those out in the packet, I don't know, a month ago. And so, we came forward, and really, and like you said, there's a group of citizens that are, they want, they have a different set of priorities and timeline than we do, but we're trying to make sure things kind of get integrated and dovetailed together, because it all leads to the same thing, which is letting Wolf Swamp Fields be the best playing fields they can be, and significantly better than they are today. And then the, but our number one priority is parking and safety. So, in the discussion with the CPA, we knew it was in the hundreds of thousands of dollars, probably $500,000 or $600,000 by the time you get done doing all of the parking and access and irrigation. And so, we knew that it couldn't be funded in one year. We are in the midst of, it's really Barry and myself are really working to find, and Parks and Rec and some other stakeholders are working to finalize this master plan. Once we have that selected layout of the field that we think is going to work best for us, that'll settle what the parking is going to really look like, and then what the irrigation layout is going to look like. And then from there, it's, enough research has been done, we'll know a fairly reasonable order of magnitude cost. So, I would, I, I'm 99% certain, by the time we get to town meeting, we'll be able to tell you what the total amount is, but, like I said, we've been kind of going on, and, like I said, iterative basis, and we didn't really know until we got to that meeting that night, that this group of citizens were putting forward several hundred thousand dollars in request for irrigation. So, it was there that we realized, we have to make sure we're more integrated in this effort. But since we knew, since CPA knew they didn't have enough, and we knew they didn't have enough to fund it all in one year, it was just break it off in increments. But, like I said, I think the town voters, I agree with you, town voters should know what the end zone is, and we will present that information when we get to town meeting.
So, so, we're going to essentially put $100,000 into a bank, into an account, and then potentially do this four more years, if it's $500,000.
There is some work, there's some front-end work that is less than $100,000, that's the work along Wolf Swamp Road, like that first phase. We have to evaluate, is there an efficiency that we're losing by doing that as a one-off, versus doing it as part of a larger project?
Always like that, yeah, sure.
We'll get there, but we could do that work upfront, I know that is a high priority for us. But again, these are all things, the pieces are kind of falling together on this, and we know we don't, can't do it all in one year, but we are, we're meeting, supposed to be tomorrow, actually, to go over, to go over the alignment of the fields and stuff like that. So, we will, like I said, I agree, I think they, they want to know as well, they did ask us that question, I just didn't have the information.
So, so, we have not yet settled on, because when you sent us, there were like three or four, we're still, you're still debating on.
I think Barry knows what she wants to do, I think she's talked to the park board about it. I know who knows nothing about what they should be, and it's me. So, when I get their recommendation, I'm going to, you know, we'll, we'll see if it makes the most sense, like, so, parking access, safety, field layout, and then, because it makes no sense to plan an irrigation system if you don't know your field layout.
So, that's where the stakeholders also have to come forth, come together and approve, or, not approve, but take part in that discussion.
Yeah. So, I just.
And to your point, we don't want to put money in a quote-unquote "bank." We, that does us no good, it does the town no good. We want projects that move forward in a reasonable pace to completion.
Okay. And I guess the other thing is, Article 16, which is the Bliss Park Trails, if I'm reading it correctly, it's a total of $36,000 coming out of three different accounts. It says $18,000 from Community Preservation Recreation Open Space Fund, $17,000 from, from Community Preservation Undesignated, and $1,000.
Actually, 18 is the total. Yes, 18 is the total on that project. 17 comes from.
17 and one equals 18.
The Community Preservation, right.
The total appropriation is 18. It's coming from two sources.
Oh, okay. All right. I guess I needed to read it with the commas in the right places, or something like that. Okay. Thank you. Okay. And then, we have, the article about the community, or the, I moved it out here, must be for the Community House Roof, 17, and, now, that's slate roof, right?
No, the Community House Roof is not a slate roof, I believe it's a tile or rubber up on top there.
Up on top.
And it's a balter, sorry, it's how you use that term, the fencing on top of it, that has been replaced, and then also, that's not slate on that side, Stephen, correct? That's not.
It's the front, it's the flat part.
Yeah, it's the front flat part.
It does have slate on it, but that's not, that's not a project.
No. I thought it was like a rubber coating.
It's the bell string, it's the overhang part. Okay, great. Yeah. Good. Yeah, that's great to do that. Murray?
Actually, this goes to the town manager. I know, we had talked last year, you were talking about putting in a request for taking care of new landscaping on the front of the community house, and the, the veterans, is that World War II memorial that's next to, that's crumbling? And did you present that to CPC, or you're holding on CPA?
No, that, that got moved. The plaques, the World War I plaques, actually got moved last year, I think we funded that, just out of the general fund budget, it was like $3,000. And if you didn't go over, you know, when the weather gets nice, we, we put them, we got the Veteran Circle to endorse it, and we put them on the memorial on the green, where the flag is, and it looks like they were there from the beginning, it really was masterfully done. So, I'm, right, as you know, we've been planning for a couple of years to really redo the parking lot at Town Hall, it looks awful, and now, like, the rocks that Mike Rabel put in, preventing parking on the grass, they get pushed out of the way and plowing, so people back to park, like, the water truck parks on the, or, you know, police cars, FedEx, or, it just, it looks awful. It's all torn up now, because the Community House wall project started. Once that gets done, we'll probably bring that back as an FY20 capital project, because it's probably $100,000 to do that the right way. I would imagine that dealing with these crumbling cement remains of that World War I memorial and the flagpole will be in that scope. For right now, it's fine the way it is, and, you know, the plaques aren't going to fall off, which was our primary concern. So, that'll probably be next year.
And will you look to reconfigure the front of Community House then, too, since you're doing the, where are you going to keep the semicircle driveway, and so, there won't be any real changes since you're doing that road?
No, and I know this was commented at the last meeting, we did spend a lot of time looking at that. We had received those same comments a year ago, and we brought them to the traffic committee, looked at everything all over again, and decided that, given all of the considerations, not just perceptions of safety, given all the considerations, the layout that we were proposing was, was the best balance. And I remind people that it used to be two ways, so, the decision this board made to make it one way dramatically improved safety. And so, this kind of battle over, is it's not safe now, I don't understand that, because it's much safer than it was. The crossing guard at that intersection, which is also going to be upgraded now with our Complete Streets grant, he'll tell, he'll be the first one to tell you that it's, his job's a lot easier than it used to be when it was two-way. So, you know, I understand the comment about the, you know, the parking, but, you know, we were getting hit all the time about parking around the community house. I haven't gotten a complaint since, you know, the day after we made that change, I haven't gotten a complaint about parking, other than this perception that it doesn't work well, but everybody else, I think, seems to think it works pretty well. Nothing's ever going to be 100% safe, but we think that we were able to maximize the parking, get the handicap parking as close to the building as we possibly can, and then maintain that drop-off access, which is really essential for people with mobility issues.
Yeah. John, can you talk a little bit about, because I'm fascinated by the, by the study of the old train station, which is now the DPW? Whoever proposed it to you, what did they hope to potentially do with that?
Right, so, that's, that is the old train depot, so, that's a potentially historic site. I know it's been modified to a certain degree, become a DPW officer, whatever else has been down there, but there's a lot of interest in the historical sections about maintaining that preservation. So, actually, at the end of this month, as a precursor to this evaluation, the Historic Commission will be visiting, I think, on March 28th, and do a cursory look at it, and see if there is any of the old train stations still viable as a historical landmark.
So, this is a historical commission, as opposed to the Historical Society that?
This is mine request.
Okay.
So.
I didn't remember who it was.
Yeah, no, it was mine.
I'm just fascinated by.
And it was one of these, geez, we really ought to do this before we all of a sudden get far in the project, and we get a demolition delay order, or something like that. So, I called Mario and said, have the on-call architect figure out what it would cost to do this analysis. So, it was a kind of a lightbulb moment for me, but we had received correspondence from the Historic Commission, saying that it's a pre-1903 building. I called them and said, have you been inside the building recently? No, and, you know, just, they look at the pictures of the rail house, and think that just, there's just something around that. You know, Pete Thurber's office is actually the oldest part of the building, if you know where Pete Thurber's office is, and you can still see some of the remnants of the split door and the window, the ticket-taking window, but as soon as you walk out of his office, it, there's really nothing there. So, what I, I didn't want, again, is to come up at a critical moment for the project, and so, I said, let's figure out what we have there now, because we're going to be developing a demolition scope, and if we, turns out we can't demolish that building, I want to know that upfront, versus, yeah, it's been compromised, you know, too much to be saved, so we're just going to take pictures of the original elements and document that. So, that's really the thought process, so we know before they move out, and before we need to make a decision on this, on that site, what the status of that building is.
Yeah.
The demolition, sorry, the demolition committee did visit it last week, and Steve Weiss, actually, I think, went down. I don't know what their findings were.
Yeah. Because, I mean, even if we moved it down.
I know there's a meeting on the 28th down there also, with that.
Hopefully. Because even if we moved it to Fanny Stebbins, and moved the other end, and some, and had some kind of a place, of course, I think it would make a nice bar, but.
Yeah. First of all, I don't know that that's an option, because they don't, I mean, I don't know where we would put it in Fanny Stebbins, and the other thing is, it's expensive to move a building. It would probably remain on-site if we had to preserve it, but again, I think, when you really look at it, this really, it's really been, it's really been compromised over time, where I don't think anything much original exists.
I thought it'd be a great visitor center for the new Subiocanti Wildlife Refuge.
Yeah.
You can see if US Fish and Wildlife wants to staff that.
They haven't responded to those emails yet.
Yeah, yeah, right.
But Stephen, I mean, our, our plan to demolition the DPW facility could or could not include that potentially, if we found we needed to maintain it, right?
We would have, we, we have flexibility on what we want to do with the existing site, notwithstanding the landfill issues.
I mean, the shop and the storage building sheds and that stuff.
Right. But it is, when the Historic District, when the Historic Commission put us on notice that they find this to be a pre-1903 structure without sight unseen, that was where I said, well, then we better figure this out, going well before it comes time, because your projects always get delayed, where like, all of a sudden, you know, the excavator shows up to take the thing down, you're like, oh, jeez, is this historic or not?
But it wouldn't be the worst thing in the world if we found out next month, or two months from now, or three months from now, long before, went to turn it down, tear it down, that in fact, we ought not tear it down, or should not tear it down.
Yeah, no, that's, that's exactly what we're doing, Mark.
Is it going to cost us that much money to figure that out?
It's, it's an up-to amount, and it really is going in, there is some, and it's a little tricky to do when people are there, because you're popping ceiling tiles, and you may need to remove some sections of walls, really find out what structures are there. Like I said, we'll get some guidance at the end of this month, and we'll go from there. And if it turns out it's not that much, then we don't spend it.
Okay.
All right.
There is a, there is a specific form and format that you have to use to archive and record a property, especially if you're going to demolish it, and it is, I think, either state or federal standard, so there is some expense to doing that. It's not just going on your phone, stamp a few photos, and you're good, it's the type, the type of development of the pictures and stuff, and so, it's not as simple as it appears on space.
But it doesn't have to be $10,000, it could be much less.
It could be much less.
If, that's, if it's on state property, if it's on private property, they could just sort of.
If the Historic Commission decides that it is no longer historically significant, then it could be zero.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, well, I think we covered any other questions on these?
One of those train stations.
You have to ask me the question you've asked everybody tonight, please.
There's a project we didn't put on, what project would you have liked to make?
What I need, what I need is more applicants, so this should be had nine applicants.
Oh, that's fun.
And it'd be great to have 29 applicants next year for our grant proposal, it's open to everybody, they can just go ahead and submit one, and that'd be wonderful.
Well, you know, what'd be great is if we put a press release out beginning of October, and.
We do pretty good, I think, in publicizing on the town website, and then also posting at Town Hall.
Yeah, but if we put it in the newspapers, and we could show what projects were actually covered last time.
The only thing that gets problematic, and, so, I do.
Because you want to control the projects going.
Well, I like the fact that we, you know, the level of, not the level, but the competition isn't so significant where we can't have a reasonable audience and expectation of some level of funding, but I'll tell you, inevitably, citizen projects end up getting dumped on the town. The Wolf Swamp irrigation is a perfect example, and there's no mechanism right now at the CPA level to prevent what could end up becoming burdensome projects being placed on the town with us having no idea that they were coming.
Well, I think that's why David's project about the park benches and forms supportable was so well researched and so well worked out, that he went forward and met with a town engineer, and had that process all worked out beforehand, and certainly, something like Wolf Swamp Fields, there has to be a ton of communication and cooperation on a project like that.
Well, I mean, I think even going forward, if it's a town facility, a town-owned facility, the application really should come from the town, and the citizens should come to the select board or me and say, what do you think, can we, can we, would you co-sign this application for this, and then we can, and then I can, I can evaluate, well, no, we don't really have the manpower resources to do this, or this is gonna cost us more money in the future than we have today, so no, I'm not gonna co-sign, or no, we don't wanna sponsor the application. Um, it just, and I hate to be the skunk at the garden party, but that's, it's a real, it's a real thing, you know, you're, it's a real thing.
I know it's a real thing, but I think then you can tell the, you can talk to the CPA about what the costs are, but I don't think you should be the doorkeeper to any projects.
For town-owned, for town-owned facilities?
For town-owned facilities, yes. I think that you, you can then tell them what the costs are, so it's a different perspective.
I know you wanna hear this, I'm telling you, it, there is, even though we, we want the, the facilities to be the best they can be, I'm telling you that we've just been lucky to get to not have a, have a conflict with an, a citizen applicant, because there is a real flaw in this process, where, you know, we manage our, we, we manage the town facilities with our budgets and our resources that we have, and all of a sudden, out of nowhere comes a, a, a project. And, and most times, we support what the end goal is, but a lot of times, we just don't know what it was, or the application doesn't reflect any sort of ongoing maintenance or anything else, and there's nothing that compels people to come to us first, to get, to get the towns' take on it.
So, so Stephen, is, is the town compelled to commit resources to implement a citizen-initiated project just because it's funded through the CPA?
That's how it works right now.
We're kinda forced in certain areas, especially when it comes to the purchase.
I mean, this, to some degree, this goes back to the pink and purple polka dot, I mean, 10 people with a sign, with signatures can get anything on the town warrant and compel the town to do anything, I mean, that's the way our charter's written, and so, that's not, that's significant, and it can be a whole lot more than a CPA-cap project, I think.
Well, the CPA is the doorkeeper, and they're supposed to...
Correct. Well, we're the, the, the clearinghouse.
Yeah.
And the doorkeeper is, is town meeting.
Legislation, yeah, that's right.
So, but to answer your question, yes, and it's, and I think there's a, so, for example, the irrigation, the citizens petition, and they have a citizens petition on the warrant to add more money to that project. Um, we're not, we're not gonna let a citizen hire a private contractor and go out there and work on our property, we're not allowed to do that under the bidding laws and under, under master general law, whether it's public construction or procurement of goods and services. And a lot of times, citizens just have no idea, and they think that once they get their money, they're gonna hire the contractor, and they're just gonna go onto the town property and take care of it, and that's how a lot of these things end up getting pushed back on us, and then we're in the position of saying, well, no, you need to do it this way, though by the way, it's a prevailing wage, and so it costs twice as much, and then you don't have enough money, and it just...
But Stephen, at what point then do we go to the citizens, or we go to the CPA, or we go to town meeting and say, you know, if you pass this, it replaces a, a dollar burden, not to mention a resource burden, back on the, back on the town?
I think this, I think this project is an exception rather than a rule, because it was a rather large project.
Right, but, but I think people need to understand that, if you pass it, all you're doing is paying for the, the, you know, the, the irrigation system, we still gotta put an engineer on it, we gotta, you know, and something else isn't gonna get done because of, of time.
I mean, there hasn't been a single one that hasn't been a good idea, but I, like the boat launch one, it ended up not being a, a big deal for us, but our engineer had to go down and sign off on someone, to get involved in the permitting, I believe, early on.
I think that one's still on hold.
Yeah, it definitely went forward.
Boat ramp?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's on hold.
Yeah.
Because it was, you know, how much would a boat ramp cost? Well, boat ramp costs $11,000. As John knows, permitting a boat ramp costs you three times or four times that amount.
Which we can talk about dredging Laurel Pond later on, too, if you want.
Right, yeah. And that's the thing, a citizens could come for, a citizen could come forward and say, how much to dredge Laurel Pond? Okay, 50 grand, whatever. And then permitting and everything else, and they, and then all of a sudden, the legislative branch gives us $50,000 to do this project, which is impossible to do for $50,000.
Therefore, it doesn't get done.
But just like with Russell Field and, and some of the other fields, the, I think a lot of that maintenance and cost of maintenance falls upon the, the group or club that's maintaining it, correct? With DPW maybe doing some, a considerable amount of the work, if not all of it. Again, that's the understanding at Wolf Swamp, as these fields are improved also.
So, new dugouts at Turner Park?
Mm-hmm.
We're building those. Now, I think we're getting paid by CPA to build them, but the DPW is still building them, cause I don't think they could get done for the, for the amount.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, again, I don't know the process of being built, we are definitely paying for those.
Yeah.
John, a quick change of discussion here, there's a interesting article in the, in the paper the other morning, and I think it was a, effective, or reporting on the, uh, Supreme Judicial Court ruling on community preservation funds.
It was a very interesting article, yes.
Which, I, I read the article, I had to read it three times, because the headline said one thing, and the article said something totally different. I assume you folks are up on, on...
Very much so.
What the allowed and not allowed, because I gotta tell you, from reading the article, I couldn't...
So...
Chairman Steven Weiss is all over that.
The headline says, money allowed for private, and then the article said, money's not allowed, because it's so restrictive.
I don't wanna take up more of John's time, but I do want...
I'm just a lackey here, Chairman Steven Weiss is very, uh, he, he guides the commission, and also Stuart Saginaw from the State CTC Committee. Anytime we make a decision or start into gray water, we get opinions from Stuart Saginaw from the, from the state.
So, and I'm gonna brag on Steve Weiss for a minute, he did circulate that decision to myself and Steve Metz, and I think maybe Tom as well, but, um, last year, they took no action on a application, I think, from a local house of worship, out of concerns that Steve, cause he's an attorney, knew that this case was making its way through, and so they held off, they didn't deny the application, but they didn't approve it either, and he said, let's just see what happens, and he guessed right.
Cause it didn't meet, it didn't meet the three criteria, though.
Yeah, it didn't, well, just generally, the, the religion...
Constitutional.
Yeah, so, um, he, they did well to not get us into that same position that, that the other towns.
No, they said, you can, you can do it, but you have to meet, and there were, there were three criteria they talked about.
Well, he told me that it was based on separation of church and state, and so there's certain private projects you can do, but when there's a religious institution involved, you have to be especially careful, and then there's criteria that has to be met.
The separation is established by the three-part test, basically, and I scanned the decision, but basically, it's, there's three questions you have to ask to determine how separate it truly is, and the, in the, in the case, it was restoring a stained-glass window, and in the case, I think it was First Church, it was not stained glass, but similar type, not co...
San Andreas stained glass.
Yeah, and, right, but the same types of things, and they clearly would not have met the standard had they been approved, and so I wanna commend Steve Weiss for kinda being on top of that, and, and like I said, sparing the town from having to go back and either claw money back from projects that are no longer constitutionally allowed, or...
Being named in the suit.
Yeah, or be, or be taken, or have the ACLU, you know, taking us to court. So, anyway. Any other questions about any of our projects?
No, it looked like great projects, thank you.
Great, thank you, I appreciate all your support.
Thanks.
Thank you.
So, should we continue to look at the warrant, or are we...
Shut it down for tomorrow.
So, I guess I would just ask on the, um, on the budget, um, what's that? Oh, the, the policies, the, as I mentioned in the presentation, thank you. As I mentioned in the presentation, the OPEB and capital policies need to be amended for, um, the budget that I presented to you to work. Now, it's not a huge amount of money, um, hundred and, around a hundred thousand dollars.
Hundred and fifty, hundred, six, hundred and sixty thousand dollars, actually, between both of them.
Between the both policies, so, um...
Or we waive it for this year, and we don't change the policy.
Well, I, I think the policies need, need actually to be corrected, cause what's happening right now is, you have a debt exclusion part of the tax levy, and that debt exclusion is earmarked to pay debt service, and what I have been doing is taking the percentages for OPEB and capital, and taking the percentages out of that debt exclusion, so I'm actually penalizing the, the operating budget by 150, 160,000 dollars, because that money should all be dedicated towards debt, and I'm taking that out of the bottom line.
Well, I could see, talking about OPEB, but I, I'm comfortable with that, Richard, here, in making changes in capital.
So, the other, the other part of this is on capital, like I said, it's, the intent of the policy was a percentage of the operating budget, and what Paul is saying is, that's not actually what we're doing in our calculation. The other, and then the other part of this with, in the OPEB policy is, um, in fact, I think I saw a school community member make this comment during one of their meetings, um, have it be kind of a, a fixed minimum, not fixed minimum, but a, a 1%, which our policy was, I think next year, we would've hit 1%.
1% FY19.
FY19 would've been 1%. So, lock in that 1%, and then the first 100,000 of free cash each year, and then, that'll be, that would be an increase over what we've been paying, but that was one of the things that, like I said, the school committee, I don't know if they, I think we talked about in the joint meeting as well, um, is maybe using free cash to help supplement the OPEB liability, uh, supplement the OPEB trust fund is what I mean to say.
Well, we did.
And I think other communities are doing that, we have, we have done that in the past, and just codify that in the policy, because, I mean, the, the reality is, like I said, this, over there, if every year, the initial discussion of the school committee is going to be, well, how are we gonna get this, to make this work, and they say, well, are you gonna fully fund your policies? Um, which I always, they're not, they may be select board policies, but schools get capital and schools contribute to OPEB. Um, and I just thought, rather than have these things be the perennial political football, if we can tighten up the metric by which the annual contributions are made, then they are less of a target, and they, I think they are more justifiable as being an essential part of the budget, which I, I do believe they are. On capital, I would also add that, um, if you amortized, you know, some of the large projects we've moved, um, in the last couple of years, you know, I think we're, we're more than meeting our obligation in terms of investment in the town's infrastructure for large-scale stuff. Certainly on asphalt, you know, road resurfacing, sidewalks, things like that, we could always do more, and Richard would be the first person to tell you that, but new DPW, Dwight Road Corridor, Converse Street, um, and there's, I mean, there's, there's a few more that we've been able to do with essentially non-capital expenditures, that I think, at this time, right now, this makes sense, and you can always change it again, if you determine in the future it doesn't make sense.
For Mark?
Yeah, I, you know, I, I've been here long enough to see the pendulum swing, and I think, personally, I think it's already over, somewhat over swung for certainly capital, especially the discussion we just had, I mean, CPA has turned into a capitals, capital planning Part B. I mean, it, it's the capital projects that we, you know, couldn't fund through our capital projects, and, you know, they, they seem to fit, but it's the community house and the fields and, and things like that, and, and I gotta tell you, I'd be very happy to, to, to start holding the line on capital to some degree, and, and I know Richard would go nuts if he heard me say that, even with asphalt and sidewalks, and I, and, because there is no end in, in sight, and we're literally, in my opinion, you know, gonna be capital-rich and, and operating-poor if, if, if we keep this up and continue to raise our capital. I mean, I, you know, the, the intent at one point was 2% of tax revenue, of revenue, went to capital, and that's been increased and increased to 2%, then it became 2% of our, of our budget, or plus an incremental amount, and, and the, the fact is that, even as 2% of our tax revenue, it, it automatically escalates 2.5% a year, you know, so, from my perspective, you know, I think we need to put a cap on some of these things, and, you know, OPEB is the monster that can take all of our money if we wanted it to, and I think the, the key is gonna be discipline. I, I read the proposal to put 100,000 dollars, the first 100,000 dollars of free cash every year at the OPEB, and I said, why? What are we getting, what, what extra are we getting out of it by putting that extra money into it beyond what we already did? And, and I'm not saying it's a bad idea, I just read it and said, why? You know, it's 100,000 dollars that we might use for something else, and, and so, I, I have to agree with Marie at this point, let's just, let's just, you know, make an exception to the policies at this point, but before we change them, I think we need a lot more, look at all the variables, personal opinion.
Sorry, again.
Marie, yeah?
As I said, I don't mind changing the OPEB policy to that, uh, but I would want, at the same time, for us to get that warrant articles, we actually have the trust fund up and moving, and then I think we will have accomplished a lot on OPEB over the past couple of years, um, but I'd want to see that as one big package that we're moving forward. But capital, it's Richard's baby, it's, I think we really have to chew, go, as he says, let's chew about this, and think about it, before we move over on the capital, and I can see us making changes on the capital, uh, policy, because I think we need to keep looking at our policies and making changes, but I wouldn't wanna go forward on that without Richard being able to make a contribution.
But Marie, capital's a situation where, you know, 1,000 dollars is not enough, and 100,000 dollars is not enough, and 10 million dollars is not enough.
And there's never enough for the school budget either, because we could always spend more on the schools.
Exactly, so, so why, so why would we preferentially say more should go into capital, when in fact, I, you know, more should go into the school budget, or more should go into some other budget?
I'd like to see his opinion, and I'd like him to be able to participate in that conversation.
That's fine, but he's gonna be one of five votes.
I can say, if I can, or whenever we have a discussion again, when Richard's here, I do have the numeric presentation of how it's calculated and how it's shown, I would like to be able to go over that, because I personally think that it makes a lot of sense to make those amendments to get the debt exclusion portion out of there.
Well, I, I, I don't necessarily disagree with the getting debt exclu, you know, debt is debt, and it's not part of your operating budget, it's part of your overhead, if you will.
Especially when it's debt, debt excluded, which is specifically raising taxes for that debt.
Right, right, I, I get it.
And some of that debt's being used for capital.
No, I could see the point of the discussion, I just like that part of the discussion to be, I don't think, I, I don't know if Richard'd feel that way about the OPEB, but I can understand your feeling that, I just don't feel comfortable.
Paul, is that something you're comfortable sending us in advance to look at, or you wanna...
I'll hand it out right now, which is, like I said, we can have a discussion.
So, to answer Mark's question, why, the why is, it makes it easier to balance the budget every year if you use a bit of free cash and not tie up levy capacity at this stage of the game.
So you're saying use free cash instead of...
He's saying, why give money at all? That's what Mark's saying.
No, 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 both.
Part one, Lee, right?
No, Mark, what I'm saying is, do both. Use 1% of the revenue, not excludable debt on the OPEB, too, and then, um, add 100,000 of free cash, and maybe some years, you have, we get 2 million dollars of free cash, and you say, you know what, why don't we put in 200,000 dollars in free cash, and that way, it's, it's a mechanism for the select board to add something extra besides the automatic percentage.
So, and, and we're not, and we're not really debating this, cause we're not even in session legally, but, but why wouldn't it be a, an, an option for the select board each year to say, here's where our finances are, and here's where our free cash is, and here's the fall town meeting, and let's go for it this year, or let's not go for it this year, but to, to, to require that first 100,000 dollars of free cash?
We blow our policies all the time.
Well, I, I understand, and that's why, by, instead of having a policy, you say, you know, and, and the, the select board will be given the option every year of putting on a fall town meeting that the first, you know, that a portion of the free cash, and I wouldn't even say the first 100,000 dollars, because it, it, you know, that's a, potentially a way to fund OPEB, but I'd do it at the expense of putting it in the operating budget, like you said. You took, you already took some money out of, you took some money that would've otherwise gone in by our prior policy, out of OPEB this year, and that's all you're saying.
So, I'm saying, and, you know, you could always leave them as they are, fund up to 2.5% of levy, and the big thing is, we were actually looking at even going lower on the levy increase, but then Scanning Valley's numbers came in higher than we thought they were going to, and this is really, these policy changes were already written before we got Scanning Valley's numbers, when we were thinking we were gonna go maybe 2.2, 2.1, um, we were gonna do this no matter what, and then when we got the health insurance numbers, we said, well, to get to the 2.3 goal, we should advance these now.
Yeah.
Yes, Ma?
The, I can see us having to change the policies, cause I know one of the things that they looked at us, and they said, if you have policies and you keep breaking your own policies, Moody's, doesn't Moody's look at that, to see if you have policies, and then you blow them off?
Right, they'd like to see that you're complying with your own policies, but I don't think if we make an amendment, we're still in compliance, so...
No, what I'm saying, if we ignore it, and we just, instead of changing the policy, we just say, well, we're just gonna waive it this year, does that affect us in the Moody's, uh, evaluation?
I, if we have a history of it, it might, but, you know, for a one-year amendment or a two-year amendment, I, I don't, and it all depends on the variation, I mean, if we swing largely off to the side, they might look at it unfavorably, but if we're within reason, and it doesn't quite meet the exact dollar threshold, I, I don't think it's gonna have that mu, much of an impact, but I think they would also like to see the history that we're there, near there, over a period of time, as opposed to always swinging one way or another.
Now, on the Scanning Valley numbers, uh, I know that these are estimates that you're coming in, we're putting in, there's probably a cushion there, too. Is there a certain amount every year that, from that Scanning Valley, that ends up going back into free cash?
Uh, if there's anything left over in the accounts, uh, yes, it does go back to free cash.
And how much, do you think you usually estimate, like 5%? I mean...
No, no, you know what, why don't I look up the history for you, cause I think last year, the last couple of years, it's been, um, maybe 1% or 2%?
No, which is like 10 or, 10 or 15,000 dollars?
No, I mean, it'd be between the retirees and the employees, a 1% is like 40,000 dollars.
40,000, okay.
So, I mean, it, but, you know, it's a lot of money, but we think you're 99% right, it's not a bad percentage either.
Yeah, but we could also look at an OPEB policy, which says, is there any, any savings from the health insurance could be rolled over into OPEB?
You would have to do it through the following years, free cash.
Right, right, through free cash in the fall, but it could be one of the measurements that we could use, and, and the savings.
Right.
And so, um, it's all money that's already been set aside for that, and that way, people can't say, well, we're now taking money out of other people's operating budgets to put towards OPEB, going to, we've actually just rolled it over from the health insurance OPEB, we've actually just rolled it over from the health insurance line item.
It's employee benefits going to employee benefits.
Yeah, yeah. And are we going to get that on the warrant article, the, to be able to move ahead on the OPEB trust? I know there was an email, I've chained them up back and forth.
I would love to have it on there. I have a colleague, the gentleman, at the PRIX Board, just to make sure there's no side curve balls thrown at us. He wasn't in today. I hope to speak to him until the next day or so.
Okay.
But I, I would like to move that appointment of the treasurer and the trustee and for that OPEB fund in order, that's just another step of getting it over to the PRIX people.
So, it would just be you to be the trustee, or do we have to have a group of three?
Sure.
It would just be the treasurer. The statute allows for the treasurer to be the lone trustee.
Oh, really? The lone trustee. I kept thinking you were saying there had to be three people.
If you do citizens, you, yeah.
Right, optionally, if it's not the treasurer, there's a whole nother process.
Okay.
The treasurer really, I mean, it, it makes a lot more sense, the treasurer. So, one of the things I did distribute, it was in the packet, the goals document. Yeah, it's here. Let me give you this one, Mark, so you can actually read it. I will say, I know it's a couple of typos today. It is FY19, not FY18 at the top. Basically, if you look at this, red are things that were on here that we haven't gotten to yet. Black are things that are kind of ongoing goals, and then blue are things that I have recommended adding for goals this year. Some of these also, some of these inform the budget and the warrant a little bit. But basically, this is just some things I'm already working on that I think I have a goal to complete, and then some things that we haven't started yet. But these are just my recommendations for the board's consideration, and obviously you guys can come up with some other stuff to add.
Yeah, I'd like to get rid of the low, non-conforming lots and rebuild them. It was pretty clear at town meeting that people didn't like that.
It actually is a pretty close vote.
Eh.
Well, the group wants to bring it, the planning board, or subcommittee group wants to bring it back and just explain it better to people, because the, it ended up failing because people were not describing what they read correctly.
Well, no, because there was the concern that their values would drop, values of the properties would drop in the surrounding neighborhoods.
I mean, I think the example, the one person used was pretty clear, you know, you're going to have three-story houses there.
But that wasn't a valid example.
No.
The Liberty, the Liberty, the Liberty Street one is not, doesn't, isn't applicable to this. You can do that now. That didn't affect it at all.
No, my feeling is that people come into town and they buy certain pieces of property because there's more open space, and they pay more for it maybe, or whatever, and then all of a sudden, the house goes up next. I don't, my opinion.
As you can see, it's still a-
Yeah, I mean, but if you owned a lot and you want to capitalize on it.
Well, then I would do it, and I'd sell it to somebody, yeah. No, I'm kidding.
Well, yeah, but that's it, it's, it's-
But if you're buying a non-conforming lot, you know, you probably got it at a premium, at a discount because it's a non-conforming lot, and all you're trying to do is make extra money out of it by being able to build on it, but in fact, it was discounted.
The zoning was changed years ago because people wanted more open space and not, you know, 60-by-90 foot lots. And I'm going back to that, and even though they were originally plotted that way, that's where they're not conforming, I, I think it was a good change making the bigger lots.
Stephen, can I just make a comment that about, in general, that, that as, I used to spend a lot of time in a former job in goals versus results, and a lot of these are activities and not necessarily goals, and I'd like to see kind of some things at a one-up, higher level, you know.
Every single year we do this.
I know.
Every single year you do this to me, Mark.
I know.
The top ones are the goals, and the goals the board agreed upon, and I swear, unless you write them yourself, you're just never going to accept that they're goals when they come out of somebody else's pen. I don't, I honestly, I don't know how to do it any differently. This is what we agreed on, I just, I can't.
Well, we will, I will spend some time looking at it and making suggestions.
Yeah, I mean, in terms of the format of the overall goal, the six overall goals, we've had these for a couple of years now.
We got them from Bernie.
Well, we generated them ourselves, working with Bernie, and so underneath are, you know, you have goals, then objectives, or, or goals, then tasks. So, you're right, the ones on the bottom are tasks. They are all tasks in the furtherance of the goals on top. That's, and that's why they all kind of, I align them in the columns that they're in, so they tie together those goals.
There should be yellow, reds.
You're not, whatever.
You're so easily right.
You could do it by departments, that way you make sure you have a department.
These are the goals, these are the tasks, that's correct.
So, if we disagree with the tasks, we should talk to you?
No, you should just add tasks is what I would say.
I have so many to add, but tomorrow's snow day, I'm just going to add to the task list.
It has to be approved by the rest of them.
Ah, it's all right.
This has not been a meeting, by the way, so we don't have to adjourn.
So, we just, it would be the end of the voting form.
So, she doesn't have to take notes?
No, I mean, did you really have to call in a meeting to order? I mean, it's, you called this the public forum to meet. The public forum was just an agenda item. It was a real meeting.
It is posted.
We're getting paid.
Does this mean I can't move to adjourn? I know.
So, we, if we have a snow day tomorrow, we'll meet, we'll meet on Wednesday?
Yeah, that was the recommendation of LCTV, and that's my recommendations as well, so if there's no school, the custodians don't have to be here trying to keep the building open for us to have a meeting.
What if there's early dismissal? Why don't we do that?
There's not going to be.
Everybody hates early dismissal worse than they hate the whole day. They'd rather have the whole day called than early dismissal.
So, we will-
Yeah, it's a hassle.
Well, could we just call it?
No, you have to.
No, no, we'll just plan on meeting Wednesday?
Fine, fine, I'm good with that. Just plan on meeting Wednesday. Let's not, let's not even worry about it. Tomorrow's going to be a mental issue.
Okay, let's just do that, and we'll meet at seven o'clock, our usual time, and we'll-
Plus we got Monday.
Actual meeting.
Yeah, Thursday.
And so I moved to adjourn.
Not accepted.
Not accepted.
It's canceled. All right, thank you for watching the budget form.
I'm going to see you'll be sick all spring again.